I'm hoping I get a torch.
Good stuff. All right, well, let's go ahead. It's 7:30. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Let's go ahead and call our meeting an order, and I'm going to ask the Assistant City Manager to read roll, please.
Sure, Mayor. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Shaniscott?
Here.
Sorry, Debbie.
No worries.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
All right, now let's get them officially here. Do we have a motion with our?
Okay, I'll be Ms. Hardy first. Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Letty Hardy in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to City Council's policy for remote participation at City Council meetings as adopted by Resolution 2023-01. Ms. Hardy, could you identify the remote location and reason for your participation by electronic means?
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. I'm on Topsail Island, North Carolina, on spring break with my family.
Oh, that sounds good. We got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All right.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Siskot?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes, Council. Second motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Caroline Leon in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the City Council's policy for remote participation in City Council meetings as adopted by Resolution 2023-01. Ms. Leon, could you please identify your location and reason for participation by electronic means?
Thank you, Ms. Siskot. I'm in San Diego, California, on spring break with my family.
All right, do we have a second?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Siskot?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yeah.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes.
All right, so tonight's a big budget night, but before we get to the budget, we've got some electoral matters to talk about. Before we talk about electoral matters, we need to talk about Ms. Connolly being a pillar of the community.
That's right.
Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Now that that's done, let's go on to electoral or electoral business. So, Mr. Shields, who's going to, are we going to you directly, Mr. Burkey?
Wait, you forgot one more, that Ms. Shaniscott is the executive director of the nonprofit of the year.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. Absolutely.
I would like five seconds of fame, please.
All right, all right, there you go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Burkey.
All right, any other things for the year we got here in the room? I think that's it. All right, so why don't we turn it over to you, Mr. Burkey?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time. My name's David Burkey, Director of Elections and General Registrar Voters for the City of Falls Church, and with me is Renee Andrews, Secretary of the Electoral Board. Russ Hugon and Marguerite Shovlin are the Chair and Vice Chair, and they are watching remotely tonight. I've been told to make this as pithy as possible because you guys have a long budget session ahead, so I will be very quick. What we're asking for is a resolution and two ordinances. First, the resolution is to increase election officer pay because that is the City Council's responsibility. We have not raised election officer pay in quite some time, and Fairfax County and Arlington have already gone way above where we are currently in paying our chief election officers, Assistant Chief Election Officers, and regular election officers. So, we are looking for a raise in pay for them. The ordinance, the two ordinances that we're looking for are sort of hand in hand. The first one's moderately easy. We are trying to move a polling place. We would like to, Ward Two, we would like to be out of Falls Green Apartments, which is not a public building, and move it to the Community Center. And then, Ward Three is currently in the Community Center, so we are proposing moving that to Meridian High School. Meridian High School being a public building that was not available to us when we last did redistricting in 2012 because we didn't have that land in the city. Now, ever since 2014, we have had an ongoing plan to make Meridian High School a polling place, but we decided to wait until after the census and redistricting. As we know, the pandemic made the census and the redistricting process get delayed, and then by the time we were ready to do redistricting in the state, the high school and Mustang Alley was all under construction, so we needed to wait longer before we could make the move. In the meantime, the third ordinance that we are looking for is to rebalance the boundaries of our wards. Ward, there are two thresholds that the state code gets into. If we hit 5,000 registered voters, we have to split that ward, and that would make us have four wards. Ward Three is currently over 4,000 voters. That is the second threshold that the state code looks at before you have to split. If 4,000 voters show up at a presidential election on Election Day, then you have to split that ward as well. Based on early voting turnout, making four wards in this city would be very inefficient. We would have to pay more election officers and get more equipment, but the turnout on Election Day is decreasing in the city. The last two elections showed that it was about 50%, and it's actually less than one-third of all total registered voters. So, we are suggesting, we do, we worked with the GIS Department to come up with several proposals. Electoral Board and I have decided on one of them that we like the best. Unfortunately, it does make most voters in the city get a new polling place, which requires a voter information notice to be mailed. Any changes to boundaries, any changes to polling places requires a voter information notice to be mailed, and that's going to cost approximately $10,000. I do have a PowerPoint that shows you the maps if you would like to see them.
Let me take a quick look at those.
Okay.
So, people who are currently in Ward Two, those folks, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint to load, people could walk right up there. Are they going to now, is everybody going to shift it over some? Is that how it works? Like, if you live right outside the Community Center, like I do, am I going to not be able to walk there, go to the other place, go to the high school?
Well, you will see the proposed map, and yes, you will have some voters who will not be able to walk to their polling place on Election Day anymore. But we do know that the city is two square miles, and it's very walkable, and most of them are, not most, I'd say about half of them are now starting to come to City Hall to vote early, or taking advantage of by-mail voting, including permanent by-mail voting, where they elect to receive their ballot automatically 50 days before every election. That's the clicker. The clicker. All right, so if I go like this. Okay, so that's our request. I just did some background census and redistricting. I talked about at-large and by-district a little bit. We are an at-large city, not a by-district city, so we don't have to have equal wards. Talked about the requirements for vote size, talked about the statistics for voters. This is the statistics on Election Day versus early voting. The first column is Election Day. These are how many people show up of all total registered voters. So, as you can see, in 2021 and 2022, it's under a third. The early absentee voting is also total of, based on total registered voters, and that has been increasing. It was even, you know, more early voters, obviously during the presidential election, they had 72% vote early with the pandemic. But then, 2021, it was still more than Election Day, and then 2022, they were even.
Yeah.
So, before you go further, when you said the, if 4,000 show up on the day of the presidential election, then you have to rebalance?
4,000.
4,000.
That's the first threshold. But if you have more than 5,000 registered voters in any ward?
Total.
Total.
Even if they're going to vote someplace else?
At any time. That is correct.
Okay.
So, this is our current ward map. Ward Three is currently over that first 4,000 threshold, and Ward Three is the one that is growing the most. So, this is our proposal. Our proposal leaves Ward Three room to grow, but I do understand that most of Ward Three that used to go to the Community Center will now be going to Meridian High School, and most, and half of Ward One will no longer go to Oak Street Elementary School. They will now go to Meridian. The Winter Hill area will have to change from the Community Center, and they will again go back to Oak Street Elementary School, where they were 10 years ago. And then, Ward Two will expand up to Little Falls Street and Virginia, North Virginia Avenue. This is in our proposal. There are nine other map, or eight other maps I can show you that give a different breakdown, and I can show you why we basically said no to each one, if you would like to look at it.
All right, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's ask some questions. Yeah.
I'm just curious, did you take into account the fact that the, up by Meridian High School, there's going to be between 1,000 and 1,500 people moving in in the next two years?
Correct, yes.
So, that's accounted for in these new numbers?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I would just say, did you have a comment? I mean, to me, I think it's odd, the, it looks like people, is the dot in the middle there, that's for which ward, the one dead center in the middle? What ward is the one in the middle there?
The one that's?
But that's for the purple folks, or what color folks?
That would be for Ward, yeah, Ward Two is purple.
And then, how about the one in the far right?
So, that, we are proposing that, that apartment building no longer be used as a polling place.
Oh, I see. So, that pulls in that way. The only comment I would have, which, you know, for whatever it's worth, I think it's best that the polling places are basically where people live. You know, like, that one, I know that people will live there, although it's not going to be a great portion. It's kind of hard to walk. I think a lot of people like to walk, just maybe speaking for myself. But I think something more centrally located is better for folks in general, that draws people in, such as the library. Like, even if you need to have two polling places that are public places, to me, having the library as one, as opposed to the school, which has construction right now, maybe has construction for several years, and it's kind of hard to get to. Like, it's kind of, for some people, someplace they haven't been before. My own, just off-the-cuff comment, if you want it, is to maybe have a second polling place more central in the city, like the library.
We would love to have the library. The unfortunate part with the library is that there's not enough parking. Parking is a big deal when it comes to polling places, and there aren't a lot of buildings that can accommodate both an election space, like a gym, which both the high schools and Community Center have. And one of the reasons why we want to move out of Falls Green Apartments is because their space has become too small, especially post-renovation. While they have plenty of parking, sort of, depending on if people are working or not working, they, their space for the voting space for a high turnout election like a presidential, it's become too cramped.
Got it.
So, we're looking for public buildings, and Ward Two really has none, and the library has not been ideal, mostly because of parking situation.
Got it. And so, is that a requirement by law, or just you want to have more parking? In other words, does the law require a certain number of parking spaces, or you just feel that there's not enough?
I know best practices are to have plenty of parking spaces. I'm not sure the code actually speaks to how many parking spaces you have to have.
Okay.
Voter complaints.
Okay. Ms. Hardy?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I don't know whether it's just my version, but Ward Three is green and Ward One is brown. Maybe it's just the label on the version I'm looking at. Both Ward One and Ward Three are green, so is brown Ward One?
In the proposal, Ward One is just the brown section.
Got it. So, maybe it's, I'm just confused because it's currently the words, Ward One is green and the Ward Three is also green.
Or something like the Cedar League area.
The label didn't move, yes. So, Ward Three is green section, Ward One is brown section.
Got it. So, the thing that's changed is you're taking half of what used to be Ward One and adding it to Ward Three, and then moving for those people up to the Meridian High School as the voting center.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's helpful clarification.
Mr. Snyder?
I think my comments are the same as the mayor. I don't see how making people drive when they can walk to a polling station today is good public policy. Now, I admit that there are alternatives today, which is just great, but a lot of people, it's a community gathering. It's an opportunity to meet elected officials and those who seek to be elected officials. And moving a huge part of the city all the way out to the end, to the edge of the city, means almost everybody will have to drive to get there. So, I have significant issues with that map, the way I see it today. Also, the notion of sort of scrambling things up again and spending $10,000, the confusion that's going to occur, even under the best of circumstances, I need a better case for the expenditure and the confusion that's going to be caused to the public than I've heard tonight. So, I really appreciate your work. You do a great job, but I've got a lot of issues on this before. Before, I need to get more sense about where the public is, how are they going to feel about these changes. So, these are just a couple of the issues that I would like to see addressed before we go off and make these kind of significant changes. Thank you.
Ms. Connolly?
Mr. Burkey, I don't know if you said at the beginning, I think I read, it's, is it, has state law changed that we used to be able to use Falls Green and we can't anymore?
No.
Or do we just, I thought it, you just said it had to be a public building?
So, since I've been registrar here, the state code has been that you use public buildings whenever practicable, and it was not practicable to use Falls Green or Oakwood Apartments at the time because Meridian High School was not part of the city.
Got it.
Now that Meridian High School is part of the city, it is now practicable to use a public, a public building. We are essentially mitigating risk. At some point, we are going to grow in our current situation and have to split a ward if we make no changes. That's going to create four wards, in which case, we are going to have to either put two wards in one building or add a fourth building, all of the election officers and all of the equipment that is necessary.
How much would that?
We are in the business.
What's this, how much would that cost to add a whole new ward and?
Equipment is probably in the realm of $20,000 for a couple of scanners and a touch reader. That doesn't include another cart and pull pads. Then, you're also looking at election officer expense, which is going to be, maybe a thousand a ward.
Okay. So, that's a significant?
And that's, and that's, it is a significant increase for, it's a significant increase for my budget, but my budget's half a percentage of the city budget. So, it's probably not too expensive for the whole city, but it's massively inefficient, and, and I don't have enough space in my current office to add a fourth ward cart. So, we would have to find a place to split, to, to store it. One thing I will-
It's in the back right there.
Yeah. One thing I will say is that we plan for presidential elections years in advance. This is part of the planning for a presidential election. We have a primary coming up in June, a general election that results from that primary in November, then we'll have a presidential primary in March, another primary next June, and then the presidential election. If we can make this change in April, we can get the voter information notices out and a media blitz that gets everybody ready so that they have all the communication that they need and are ready, especially for our voters who only vote in presidential elections. This is really pre-planning for a presidential.
So, but it would go into effect this year?
It would go into effect May.
May of this year.
For this year's June primary.
That's correct.
Got it.
Okay, other comments?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
I think I heard that there were nine scenarios that were proposed, or any of those nine, or the remaining eight, since we're seeing one of those nine involve maintaining Falls Green as a location, but just changing the boundaries for the ward that represents Falls Green.
It does not because Ward Three is already over the threshold of 4,000 voters. We needed to rebalance the wards so that Ward Three could be reduced. We're trying to make all wards equal, as equal as possible, so that everybody has equal access to the ballot.
So, none of those eight show a different redistricting for Ward Two? Ward Two is where Falls Green is at right now, right? Sorry, I'm looking at the map and trying to fix. Okay. So, you made Ward Two smaller to get it under 3,000. That's not any of the eight options?
Well, that means that the other two wards have to increase past the 4,000 threshold.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
I mean, it sounds like it's very possible within two years, we'll re-over that threshold anyway, right, with, you know, how many apartments come in online and the 10 acres with the Founder's Road Two, with Whole Foods, et cetera, right? I mean, is that, is this thing possible?
I would say anything is possible, but we're looking at registered voters as part of our population that matters here, and redistricting happens every 10 years, in which I, we will have to look at where the population is then.
Mr. Duncan?
I understand that the point is to try to encourage people to vote early, basically. And yet, here we are, up against the fact that some folks on Election Day still want to show up to the polls, and many of them like to walk. Is, is it possible for us to bring back, I understand the cost associated and the, and the complexity in hiring poll workers and so forth, but is it possible to look at bringing back online the American Legion Hall and/or the Scout House, which were in earlier days both used as polling places when we used to have five wards?
It is possible, if the City Council wishes it to be. It would go against the advice of the Electoral Board and myself.
Other than that?
Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, yeah, this is, I mean, you can tell you're hitting people where they live here, literally, and I don't know, we, we have to come to terms with the fact that we are going to grow, and we are going to need more places to vote, I think, if you're bumping up against that 4,000 or 5,000 number. And I'm just trying to project ahead, and, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with the American Legion Hall. It's highly accessible. It's got parking. It's, was used as a polling site in previous years. You know, okay, well, I've said my piece on that. The other thing, since I'm now captain of the new accessibility club in town, Meridian High School, obviously, anybody who's got mobility issues is going to be driving there. Once they're there, are we planning to have extra designated mobility impaired parking? And, I mean, once even you're at the door of the building, you still have a substantial distance to go if you're going to be voting down in the gym. Have we gotten into the weeds enough to know where in the building at Meridian High School we would be voting?
Yes, we have done a walkthrough of Meridian High School with the, with the people at Meridian High School. If there's no school, the foyer, the main foyer of Meridian High School is a great area, so they don't have to go too far into the building. If school is in session, we are recommending, we use the back of Meridian High School, the gym back there, and the parking for that area would be over where Marielle and Henderson Middle Schools parking is, and it is all ADA compliant.
I've learned that ADA compliance and distance are two separate undertakings.
Agreed.
And, I, you know, I don't know, I'm not going to belabor that point, but I just feel like we're going to need five wards at some point in the City of Falls Church in order to meet these standards. And that's too bad because most people are not going to be showing up on Election Day, and yet, we have to draw the lines, as I understand it, to reflect Election Day. So, I personally would like to see us at least explore the possibility of bringing the American Legion Voting Place back online. And, you know, if you got to keep Meridian, you got to keep Meridian. I mean, in the long run, that's okay, because, as was said, there's going to be thousands of people living up there. So, it makes sense to have a voting place there, particularly if you've got the accessibility thing worked out as well as you can. But, to me, making somebody who lives, you know, where Mr. Snyder, Mr. Tarter live, go all the way up to Meridian High School to vote, I know it's Falls Church, all the way is like half a mile, but still, just doesn't, doesn't seem like, doesn't seem like something that we want to do and would be something for which we would be willing to dedicate more resources, understanding the difficulty of hiring Election Day help, but still, I don't think we would let money stand in too much the way of retaining that sort of small-town voting sense that is- voting sense that is, as Mr. Snyder said, sort of part of, part of the fabric of the community. All right, that's enough.
All right. You've heard from us. Hopefully, that's something to chew on, and maybe you can give some thought to what you heard tonight. No?
Well, I will say that as far as using other polling places, the law does, does ask us to use a public building whenever practicable.
I think, I think you probably would hear from us that practical has a vague definition and that, you know, being the farthest reaches of the city may not be practical for people who may be impaired in some way, mobility impaired. But anyway, Ms. Hardy, go ahead.
I was going to say, the challenge is, obviously, there's no, like, if you look at the whole Ward Two purple section, there are zero public buildings there and, you know, 4,000 people. So it's, that's the pressure pushing up on every other bit of the city. So I think there's only so much you can do about that. There's literally no place in that that's a, a public building. That's all. No more stating the obvious.
Yeah, I actually had the same comment as Debbie. So given that we're kind of stuck without a public building, and I think the deadline that Mr. Burkey is recommending is, he would like to mail notices a month from now, May 5th, in order to catch people before early voting. It doesn't sound like we have a great option that we all love. So what is the proposed next step here?
Well, I guess my thought was to have the registrar take a look, take a look at maybe what he's heard or response. I mean, I guess if your answer is, there's nothing really to respond to or to think about, then I guess we chew on what you've proposed, but.
Well, so we're looking at a change now is the best, if we're going to change, changing as early as possible is the best change. Because right now, you have your high-information voters, they're going to vote in Democratic primary in June, and then in the local elections of the four-year cycle, the November election this year is going to be the lowest turnout of that four-year cycle.
So imagine we didn't do anything. People would vote where they did last time, right?
Correct.
And then we may need to change in a year from now, right? We may not, we may.
We do, we do risk having to get four wards.
Got it.
Yeah.
But I mean, again, that's sort of what we're talking about now in some ways.
You know, and we're talking about budgets. It's always hard for me to get a budget, and, you know, I'm hearing that a lot of money is coming my way. So if you guys are willing to have a lot of money come our way, then we'll do what you need to.
You know, let's, no, we've had a very rational conversation until right then, okay? So what I'm interested in is what our citizens think about this, and I think they should be given options, maybe if not the full nine, at least some, because I'm not sure how they're going to react to this. It's after all, who we all serve, and nobody does it better than you guys do on the Electoral Board. So I just think we need to be a little cautious about this. There was also a fire station that we haven't talked about. So, and, and we do have a history of other polling places that work pretty well, the council member Duncan mentioned. So I just think we need to spend a little more time on this and figure out where our citizens are. They may think this is a great idea, and if they do, fine. But that's after all, who we're all serving. So I'm interested in what they think about this.
Have we done polls before? I honestly don't know. I know I've been back between Falls Green and the community center at least four or five times. I don't remember being, maybe it's a good point to ask. I don't know if I would have responded or not, but I don't, have we done a poll before of people to ask them where they want to be?
I suspect the issue is going to be covered by the local newspaper. That's one good way. And perhaps the city has some ways to get these maps out to people, so we can get some kind of a reaction between now and when it comes back to us for formal, formal action.
I guess from my perspective, it wouldn't be the end of the world if we waited, did our election in November and then had some more time, even though it's, you know, we're bumping up against an election. But again, if you start in December, you know, you've got plenty of time to get the word out. But personally, my own opinion, I think less people will vote when they've got to go to the high school. I think people who already have low turnout in elections, like local elections, you'll have even lower, because they're in a place, they don't know where it is, it's not convenient, and it's not worth the hassle driving over in a construction site and not knowing where to park, which I think is very unfortunate to me. That's like the linchpin of democracy is getting people out to vote. And so I, I, it would not bother me a lot if we decided to put this off six months till after the November election, and then maybe spend a little more time, take a half step back and figure out, long-term, holistically, what's the best way to go forward.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
I, I, I think I agree with what the mayor's saying, with the addition that, given the budget implications of other alternatives, it'd be helpful, as we discussed the budget this year, to build in some number that would be possible to incorporate an extra ward or whatever needs to be done at the end of the fiscal year that we're talking about, right? So we're doing 23, 24. We ought to let the Electoral Board and the registrar have the resources that are required, if they require additional resources, without, you know, being told, oh, no, we don't have any money. Let's at least have an idea of what kind of money we're talking about, if changes are going to be more along the lines of what you're talking about.
Other thoughts?
Jesse Thackeray's public building, I mean, it's not that big, but it's a public building. Yeah. You know? Anyway.
Timing-wise, if it doesn't happen now, we won't recommend it until after the presidential election, because we will have, we will likely have a presidential primary on March, in March, with early voting starting in January. And so it'll be election, 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 election. So if you are not keen on doing it now, we, we do risk splitting into four wards by 2024. I'm not saying it's a high risk, but it is a risk. And then, and then I would be back to ask for this again.
So at least from my, go ahead. I mean, I'm just saying for myself, I don't, I'm not necessarily opposed, I don't like the location. So if I heard a location that was more central, like, you know, the American Legion or the VFW, whatever, the American Legion Building or the library or something more central, I wouldn't really have issue with. But I have issue with something that's in the farthest corner, literally, of the city with a moat, which is a construction site all around it. And that concerns me, getting people out. If you came back with a proposal to put it someplace more central, I don't think I'd have a problem with it, but that's my issue personally.
For, for, for public buildings, which is where we try to put our polling places, we just don't have them in the city.
Got, well, I mean, we do have some. There's flaws. I mean, we have a library, right, that doesn't have a lot of parking, it's got tons of street parking around there. Maybe we could restrict street parking to voters that day. I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I just think there are possibilities maybe haven't been fully flushed out, but that's just my initial perception, but others may disagree. Ms. Conley?
Advocate on the, oh, sorry. You were first.
No, you go first.
I was going to say, devil's advocate on the word Two, like Falls Green is technically the furthest, the other direction, right? So it's not, not that many people walk to down Roosevelt because it's a busy street in Manhattan. Until that intersection was fixed, most people weren't walking there either. So those of us, those people who live in that ward may say, like, oh, we've been doing that for, off and on for 25 years or more.
I guess I would just say that if that's not optimal, we don't want to replace, you know, go for the fly, pan it into the fire. What's that?
I don't think it was a problem. I mean, we had pretty good turnout, but, anyway. I, I don't, I defer to the experts and to what you all say, and if people have strong feelings about it, then we should follow those.
Just a couple of thoughts. I'm just wondering if there's a way to tweak any of these boundaries so that the people that are the closest to the community center still vote at the community center, maybe, but like, that's editing on the fly, and you guys already looked at eight different I drive up to Meridian High School all the time, and, you know, 1,200 kids or more than 1,200, 800 or not, 1,400 kids go up there every single solitary day, and their parents go there all the time. So those people are used to being there. But people who haven't been there before, it is intimidating. So we'd really, if we were to do this, have to do a really good education campaign about where to park and what to do. Because one of the things I do is welcome visitors and say, hey, this is where you're going to park. And it's like, there's this extra steps that you have to take because of that. So that not knowing where to park is a big deal. And then if it is, I don't know when, when is the primary in?
June 20th.
So school will be out by then?
Correct.
Right. Okay, so that's good. There will be probably camps and things going on there.
They don't start till the next week.
Ah, so that's perfect. But there will, I think we'll do, have to do a very good education campaign to tell people where to park and what to do and how to get there because of those distances, and can they park right in front there by the bollards and all those kind of things. And I know that is intimidating to people who haven't been there before. But again, I feel like you, you and the Electoral Board have put a lot of work into rebalancing these things, and I would support moving if it's time to move, but if others feel really strongly, I would defer to them as well.
Okay, other comments? Anyone else have anything they'd like to say or to add? All right, that's what you got from us.
Okay.
Let's see what happens coming up here. But if you can, in all sincerity, consider some of the things you've heard, and are there some possibilities that maybe are to your mind, not exactly what you were thinking, but still maybe satisfactory, a building that technically isn't a public building, but has been used by the public for many, many years. It's a polling place, may fit the bill technically also, or a public building that may have, you know, imperfect parking, that could be made to be a better parking through regulation of the streets. Anyway, just, I just suggest you maybe give some thought to this in the interim and see what you come back with, and we can have a further conversation in our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We all appreciate the great work you all do, and you're way underpaid, even with the raise. So we really appreciate it. Okay. All right, budget time. Let's see what's next on the agenda. So capital improvements first?
So we'll start, thank you, Mayor. We will start with the capital improvements program, and then we will discuss the budget ordinances, including the tax rate ordinances, the sanitary order fee ordinance. That'll happen after the briefing on the CIP. For the CIP, we are joined by Cindy Mester and by Caitlin Sobsey. And Caitlin has been working on the CIP for many years, closely with Cindy. And this year, we've asked Caitlin to give the briefing, both to the Planning Commission and to the City Council, because of her great work and tying it all together. And so we're looking forward to this presentation tonight. Cindy, did you have any other introduction comments you wanted to make?
I just wanted to note that we are going to start with the video that was produced by FCC TV as a community overview of the CIP, and then we will get more into the details. We do have several staff members on the team so that they can be available for questions. So I wanted to acknowledge Tony Dudley, Danny Schlitt, Cariona Nino, Kristen Michael, and Zach Bradley are joining us virtually. And with that, Sophie, I think you've teed us up, if you could play the video for us.
Just going to make a note that for those who are on teams, it may not come through super clearly, which is the nature of video conferencing, so you may have a little bit of lag on the video compared to us.
In the year 2040, the city of Falls Church is a welcoming and inclusive community, a special place in the heart of Northern Virginia. Involved citizens are key to the city's long-term success as a leader in education, environmental sustainability, multimodal transportation, and vibrant economic development. By investing in neighborhoods, community services and facilities, schools, and parks, the city preserves small-town character and history while honoring a deep commitment to progress and a growing community. The continual rejuvenation of robust commercial areas supports the city's high quality of life for all citizens. The Capital Improvements Program, or CIP, is the process with which the city identifies capital community needs and indicates how these needs will be funded over a six-year period, fiscal year '24 through '29. The city views every project through an equity and environmental impact lens in order to make sure the projects undertaken are equitable for all and sustainable for the future. With the once-in-a-generation scale projects, City Hall, Mary Riley Stiles Public Library, and Meridian High School, that have been completed in recent CIPs, avoidance of new debt is a priority. Grants and local tax funds will be the major funding sources for the CIP. With the economic development occurring in the city, the city is now able to use 11.5 million of the capital reserves for capital needs identified in the CIP, initially retained to ensure the new high school construction debt payment. The total six-year CIP investment for FY '24 through '29 is 152 million. For facilities, public safety, parks, and IT, 23.5 million. For transportation, 93 million. For sanitary sewer, 24 million. And for stormwater, 12 million. Some of the projects in this planned CIP include: Disaster relief shelters play a vital role in large-scale disasters and are an important part of disaster response and recovery. The city's community center is designated shelter during disasters. The city has applied for a Virginia Department of Emergency Management grant to replace the existing diesel generator with a more environmentally friendly, self-sustained, natural gas generator. The grant will pay for 61% of the new generator costs, with 39% local match required. A key component for meeting the city's greenhouse gas reduction commitment is planning for renewable energy. Leveraging the recently passed Federal Inflation Reduction Act, this project proposes to complete the installation of photovoltaic arrays on the roofs of up to eight facilities. Currently, the local portion is unfunded. The city's police department primarily keeps evidence in the City Hall station. However, police are out of space to store the required larger items, especially vehicles. Remodeling property R.B. expands the ability to secure property vital to legal court cases. The Public Works Department manages, maintains, and repairs the stormwater system, utilizing several federal and state grants. Several projects were able to start moving towards completion in FY '23. For FY '24 through '26, West Columbia Tremol Branch, Hillwood-Ives Branch, and Lincoln Avenue Ellison Branch are in construction with planned completion in FY '24. Hillwood Robertson Branch, Sharrow Ave Trips Run, and Greening of Lincoln are in the design phase with planned completion in FY '25 through '26. East Columbia Harrison Branch, the Trips Run Watershed Study, and the Lincoln Avenue-West Street Watershed Study are planning to start between FY '24 through '26. The city's neighborhood traffic calming program is designed to improve transportation safety in residential neighborhoods and be responsive to concerns about traffic conditions and increase safety for pedestrians as well as bicyclists. This includes traffic studies and data collection, education, and signage, as well as physical measures such as speed humps, street striping, sidewalks, crosswalks, and curb extensions. Increased travel options can relieve local and regional congestion, improve quality of life, and support economic growth. Future multimodal connectivity and accessibility projects include landscaping, lighting and plazas to enhance the W&amp;O D Trail, and a transit access project in the Greenway Downs area. The city is currently working on creating a staff-driven, neighborhood-traffic-calming-like program to improve the existing sidewalk network. Sidewalks included in this program will be new and will connect sidewalks that go to nowhere or abruptly end at intersection, leaving gaps in the sidewalk along a street. Traffic signal timing and upgrades will increase the operational reliability and safety of the city's 27 traffic signals through rehabilitation and upgrades, major repairs, and preventative work. Projects like South Maple and Annandale will improve the intersection for all modes of traffic. Street lighting helps provide a safe environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. Replacing the about 1,100 existing lights in city streets and parks with LEDs will provide more reliable lighting with lower operating and maintenance costs and improve environmental sustainability by consuming 75% less energy. The bridge program allows the city to continue to operate and maintain these critical infrastructure elements safely by providing regular inspections, preventative maintenance, and replacement as necessary. Recent focus has been funding Oak Street Bridge replacement as well as Sharrow Bridge. These are two examples where the city is utilizing VDOT to manage the projects to shorten completion timeline. In conclusion, the total six-year CIP investment for FY '24 through '29 is 152 million. For facilities, public safety, parks, and IT, 23.5 million. For transportation, 93 million. For sanitary sewer, 24 million. And for stormwater, 12 million. The projects within the CIP help the city of Falls Church address the infrastructure needs of the community in order to create an equitable, sustainable future. For more information on the full CIP, visit fallschurchva.gov/cip.
That was really good. Who put that together?
That was FCC TV. The narrator was Michael Tipany, and we did a joint project to put in the script together. So, but he took the lead, and Michael did a great job.
You guys all did a great job. That's really professional.
So, yeah, it was important but challenging to get it down to six minutes. So thank you for letting us share it with you all. It is posted on the website, as you saw, so the community can also access that. And I know the budget ones are under final editing and will be available, too. So with that, we'd like to turn over to the presentation. We'll walk through a little bit more detail on what the CIP is, the funding sources, and then look forward to the questions and dialogue with council this evening. Caitlin.
Thanks, Ms. Mester. Good evening, Mayor Tarter and members of council. I'm Caitlin Sobsey, the grants manager and public work. I'm Kaitlyn Sobsey, the Grants Manager in Public Works. And as Deputy City Manager Mester said, we are here to present on the fiscal year 2024 to 2029 Capital Improvements Program. This is on, right? I feel like we don't really need to do that after that video that we just watched. Well, I'm going to be talking about a lot of the same things, but we do have some updates too.
If there's things that, I mean, you don't need to repeat it. If there's something that's, you can absolutely skip over.
Okay, thanks. But as you saw in the video, the CIP is an important vehicle in the city's commitment to progress and serving its community. So undertaking the task of developing the CIP has been a team effort between a lot of city staff members. I'm very grateful for the teamwork and support of Ms. Mester, the City Manager's Office, the finance team, OCOM, and FCC TV, Public Works and Planning Departments, the schools, Recreation and Parks, police, I could go on and on. But there are a ton of players involved in the process, and it's an honor to collaborate with all of them and be here tonight on their behalf to present the CIP to you. I have to what, tap several times? Oh, I see. Oh, okay.
Are we able to make it sort of full screen?
We can do the presentation too, Sophie. I'm sorry. I sent the PDF, but maybe it would be better to just use the PowerPoint. That's in the same folder, same title in the same folder under the P drive. Sorry. Quick pause. I'm just going to wait until she gets set up.
And as we switch over to the format, I do note that we gave you all hard copies in case you wanted to flip pages or take notes. This is on, will be on the website, the CIP page, as also Granicus. There's several different ways to access the details again.
Okay. I'm also just going to keep going while we get that set up. The CIP section of the staff report tonight and full CIP budget notebook and program sheets accompany and inform this presentation. So you can refer to the, I'll be referring to those materials a lot tonight. First, we'll start out with an overview, and that agenda's going to be up in one second. We'll start out with an overview of the CIP budget. Then we'll talk about the delivery of completed projects and some active projects that are ongoing in fiscal year '23 currently. The proposed and new future projects of the fiscal year '24 CIP. We'll also look at, yay, thank you. We'll also look at fiscal year '24 highlights and what staff is focused on. Then we'll talk about the funding details and process of implementation of the six-year plan and next steps. The six-year, the CIP is a six-year plan for investment in city schools, parks and fields, library, government facilities, transportation, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure. Eligible capital projects are new, one-time projects with a useful life of more than five years and costing $150,000 or more. The total proposed six-year CIP budget this year is $154 million, shown by fund here. And we'll talk about the use of funds on the next slide. Previously, when this was presented to Planning Commission and when we made the CIP video, the total budget was actually just under $152 million. But we've since added some additional funding for the Community Center Generator Project as well as a grant that we received for electric vehicles for DPW. So that number has been updated and it rounds up to $154 million. For reference, the six-year total last year was $118 million. This is a continuation of the CIP big picture and illustrates of the 154 million total, what that spending will be invested in and where the funding comes from. In the CIP budget, $93 million is invested in transportation, $25 million in facilities, fleet, and parks, or the rest of general government, $24 million in sanitary sewer utility fund, and $12 million in the stormwater fund. Of that, of those funds there, the funding sources are $81 million in grant funds, $26 million is currently in debt, primarily in the out years, and some of which is subject to change as we continue identifying future grant opportunities. We also have $21 million in pay-as-you-go or local funds. This year is the first year we'll deploy capital reserves. We plan to use $12 million over the entire six-year plan. Only $860,000 of that is planned in fiscal year '24, the rest of it being in the fiscal years '25 through '29. And we have $14 million currently unfunded or to be determined. Again, that's subject to change, hopefully, in future years as we continue planning and applying for new grants. The full CIP is posted online and available at the link shown here and also shown in the packet materials tonight. Next, we'll look at CIP accomplishments and acknowledge some of the successes of prior year CIP investments. We have two projects recently completed in fiscal year '23, South Washington Street Transit Plaza and South Washington and Maple Avenue Intersection Improvements. Both were recently completed and will be having a ribbon-cutting ceremony April 19th to celebrate the hard work of the city and all its partners in delivering these projects. Some additional completed projects in fiscal year '23 are in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. Great Falls and Little Falls NTC project was completed in late 2021. South Oak and South Lee Street was just completed in September of 2022. And the Lawton Street project was completed in December. Some more accomplishments this year. I just wanted to capture some of the productivity of staff and what we've been working on, what we plan to complete or will complete in the current fiscal year. As part of the sidewalks and streetlights program, so far, we've installed 139 LED streetlights. 3.1 miles of sanitary sewer pipes have been relined, which is equivalent to 6% of the entire pipe system. 22,000 yards, square yards of asphalt has been repaved. And Ren's Branch, which is a CIP stormwater project, completion is anticipated within the month, maybe within the week. It's, as of today, I think it's 95% complete. That project installed 290 feet of new pipe, replaced 152 feet of existing pipe, and added two curb inlets, one catch basin, and one manhole. And we have some pictures of that progress there. More on the sanitary sewer rehab lining status. This map shows the status of the rehab and relining effort. So far, we have relined 31.4 miles of the sanitary sewer pipes, which is 64% of the total 49-mile system. Getting into active projects, we're going to talk about some active projects that are ongoing right now. First, this year, we made some formatting changes to the CIP project sheets. And one change that we added was we added a column for prior year funding on the project sheets to show previous investments on active projects that may not have funding allocations in the current CIP. So in addition to understanding what is funded in the current CIP, it's also important to understand what has previously been funded and is still ongoing and active today. The summary here shows that the total of those columns across all programs was $67.6 million. These do not include completed projects, which have already been closed out, but only active projects that staff is still working. This is in addition to the $154 million proposed six-year total. So both require a lot of staff time to develop, plan, coordinate, write applications, and manage. Most of these projects are in transportation. You can see of the $67 million, $47.9 million is in transportation. And you can see the delivery schedule for all active and future transportation projects in Chapter 8. In public safety, oh, we have some additional active projects shown here in public safety, which is Chapter 5 of the CIP notebook, facilities, which is Chapter 6, and recreation and parks, which is Chapter 9, and includes the Phillips property. In transportation, which is Chapter 8, one of the project, one of the ongoing active projects that I wanted to spotlight was the Greenway Downs Neighborhood Traffic Project. This is in the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program, but it's a federally funded project. And this is one of the early concepts that was proposed for community review in March of this year. For more information about Neighborhood Traffic Calming and to see the map that includes all active and completed projects, you can visit the NTC page on the city website there. Also in transportation, we have Park Avenue Great Streets. This is currently active and in design. It's currently at 60% design. You can see some of the concepts there. The construction advertisement date is currently planned for April of 2026. I think staff is ahead of that schedule right now, but we're still looking at the scheduled completion date of December of 2028. In the stormwater program, I really wanted to spotlight some active and future projects in the stormwater program this year. With the addition of federal and state ARPA funds in that program, we've been able to advance a lot of the active stormwater projects, which you can see in full listed in the stormwater project sheet in Chapter 10 of the CIP notebook. We have projects in construction, in design, and planning to start design in fiscal years '24 through '26. The CIP video went over some of those. There's also a much more in-depth list of future project concepts with full descriptions, which is included in the CIP. It's, it's the CIP document immediately following the project sheet. So I think it's in Chapter 10, page 13. Staff is focusing on the resiliency goals outlined by Planning Commission and Council and is taking a watershed-wide approach to developing future projects, studying the entire watershed as opposed to only addressing the problem areas in the floodplain. Stormwater and CIP staff continue developing this approach and seeking grant opportunities for future projects and generally just expanding on the stormwater program to meet the resiliency goals. The graphic here shows some of the results of one of the recent modeling studies that was done for Sharrow Avenue. Continuing with active projects, these are some active projects which are expected to be completed in fiscal year '24. Those are North Washington and Columbia, which will be complete in fall or winter of 2023. South Oak Street Bridge Replacement, which is in construction now, which will be complete in the fall of 2023. West Falls Church Pipe Bursting Project, which should be complete next spring. And then also three of the stormwater projects that were noted in the video. Active projects that are expected to be completed in fiscal year '25 are the W&amp;O D Trail Crossings Project. That's scheduled to be completed in summer of 2024. I think the notice to advertise was just published on Friday, so it's likely that it'll be in construction in fiscal year '24 with a completion date in '25. Berman Park Greenway, or, I'm sorry, Berman Park Project, which is also anticipated to be complete in summer of 2024, and the Greenway Downs Project, which is to be completed in spring of 2025, plus two additional stormwater projects that will be completed in fiscal year '25. In the proposed fiscal year '24 to '29 CIP, these are some of the new projects that are funded, and those are South Washington Bus Stop Expansion and Access to Transit. We received a $6.3 million grant that will be allocated in fiscal year '25 through '27. Sharrow Avenue Bridge Replacement, which will be going into construction in fiscal year '26. North Washington Street Multimodal Improvements, which we also received a grant, $22.5 million from MBTA, which will be appropriated in fiscal year '26. And the Greening of Lincoln Avenue Stormwater Project, which is an ARPA-funded project and will be going into construction in fiscal year '25. So just some new projects coming online in the next couple of years.
And what's the picture there on that slide?
That's the Greening of Lincoln Avenue. Thank you. That's one of the conceptual designs, yeah.
One of the concepts.
In the proposed FY '24 CIP, oh, I'm sorry. This is one of the new project spotlights that I just mentioned, South Washington Bus Stop Expansion and Access to Transit. Again, we received a $6.3 million federal grant from Smart Scale. The money will be allocated over fiscal years '25 through '27. The project aims to improve pedestrian safety and increase transit access along South Washington from the city limits to, it picks up where the South Washington and Maple intersection was just completed. It decreases lane widths, installs pedestrian islands mid-crossing, and improves intersection geometry at Marshall and Greenway, that intersection. It also relocates two existing bus shelters and adds six new bus shelters. Another new project spotlight is the North Washington Multimodal Improvements that I mentioned. Again, we received $22.5 million from MBTA for that. Will be receiving it in fiscal year '26. This project improves pedestrian safety as well, increases traffic calming and bicycle access along North Washington from Great Falls to Gresham. Signal improvements at Gresham Place intersection will be included, as well as a HAWK signal near East Jefferson, and utility relocation and undergrounding. Some fiscal year '24 highlights, a strong emphasis on environmental sustainability and community resilience, which I've talked about a little bit. The fiscal year '24 CIP is developed using an environmental impact lens, which prioritizes sustainability and resilience. Some new environmental initiatives include the stormwater and green infrastructure projects I mentioned, using that watershed-wide approach to future projects and planning, the Community Center Natural Gas Generator and the installation of rooftop solar panels. We've also added $200,000 annual budget for replacing fleet and heavy machinery with more fuel-efficient models. $600,000 in a new grant received for electric vehicle and hybrid vehicles, same thing, along with 10 chargers for those. And we've also invested $9.3 million for the purchase of wastewater additional treatment capacity from Fairfax County to address new growth in the West Broad Corridor. This purchase will be funded with debt issuance and paid for with developer connection fees. Another highlight is leveraging federal and state funds. Federal and state earmark funds for transportation and stormwater. We've, so far, we've received $1.5 million federal and $3 million in state earmark funds for the multimodal program. $4 million for stormwater, I think, was received last year, and we have another $4 million currently pending. $6 million is a proposed request that we've made through Congress for more affordable housing and transportation programs. We've also received over $2 million from VDOT for additional, from VDOT additional program funds just to supplement existing transportation projects that have funding gaps on them, either due to inflation or increasing construction costs. The utilization of local funds in deploying capital reserve in fiscal year '24, in fiscal year '24, $1.2 million local funds have been invested into the transportation program and also general fund. Again, I mentioned that, $860,000 for capital reserve. That's invested into IT core infrastructure reinvestment and park master plan implementation in '24. And then the, another $10.6 million of capital reserve funds is invested over years '25 through '29. This is the capital reserve projections chart. As you can see, the ending balance will go down over the six-year plan as we start to reinvest some of the capital reserves into the CIP and general fund. But the available balance fund projection shows that the balance stays above the 20% of expenditures reserved as previously set by council and the financial policy. So you can see that the available funds, shown in blue, staying above or right at that 20% of expenditures, which is the red line. So it fully complies with the financial policy and is a prudent investment. Another highlight that we talked about in the staff report for tonight is a project management and workload evaluation. As we talk about the city's growth and a growing CIP, we also have to plan that growth carefully. Staff does an annual evaluation internally when the CIP is developed, which looks at the project delivery schedule and procurement workload and measures it against available staff resources. Again, that delivery schedule is available in Chapter 8 of the CIP notebook. It's included, I think it's 8-3, it's one of the first few pages. And then it shows all active and future transportation projects when they're scheduled to be delivered. In order to maintain that schedule, staff looks at project management and staff workloads. Current project management average is 4.6 projects per project manager. We are targeting three and a half projects per project manager to improve the city's on-time project delivery and efficiency. In the transportation program, we're particularly project-heavy compared with the current staffing level. So staff has identified a few projects that we may delay. We also have a couple other strategies in order to meet the three and a half project target. The focus and priority is definitely existing projects in fiscal year '24 and catching up on a lot of the newer projects that were initiated in the last couple of years. So no new transportation projects or new grants are added in fiscal year '24. Some, actually, some are, but if they are, they're in the out years and they're primarily Actually, some are, but if they are, they're in the out-years and they're primarily unfunded. So there'll be future opportunities for grant funding that we'll look at. Also, we've added a couple new grants as well, but most of those, the funding is available after fiscal year '25. So for fiscal year '24, just focusing on delivering those existing projects and delivering them well. We're also utilizing outside consultants and outsourcing project management support wherever we can, as mentioned with, you know, VDOT, providing some project management and construction management support on the two bridge projects. And then we've also enlisted Fairfax County to help with the project management of West Falls Church and W N O D connection along Shreve Road. Also provided is a procurement forecast. This shows the current schedule of procurement required for projects with federal funding. Procurement is a large piece of project delivery, and with more federal funding opportunities come more federal procurement compliance and demand on staff. Sometimes federal procurement can also add to our delivery schedule, sometimes as much as one to two years. So it's complex. It's critical for staff to track the procurement workload and match appropriate resources. Historically, we've been able to write two to three federal IFBs a year. Additional procurement staff has been added to the finance department, and also we've done some cross-training of existing procurement staff in DPW, and that will help us meet a target of four to five federal IFBs per year. The conclusion, I know I just shared a lot of information, the conclusion of these two slides is that we do have enough staff to deliver the CIP in fiscal year '24 currently and probably in fiscal year '25, too. But beyond that, we're just, we're going to implement these new strategies and, but we'll need to be just really mindful of the increased and growing demand in these areas. We'll need to monitor them carefully, maybe get creative, and that sort of summarizes the approach that I've shown here. Moving on to funding, at the beginning of tonight's presentation, we saw this chart, which summarizes the 154 million. On the left side, we have the project uses. On the right side, we have the funding sources. So on the left, we sort of have the what of the CIP, what we're spending money on, what we're delivering, and then on the right, we have how or where we're getting the money for that. On this slide, this is also sort of a visual summary of the what of the CIP. So this is the complete fiscal, proposed fiscal year '24 to '29 CIP by program. In purple there, you have the transportation, which is usually historically our most robust program at $93 million. We also have $24 million for sanitary sewer is in light blue, I think, and then that pink or rose color is, is stormwater, sorry, excuse me. And then the rest of it, you have, you know, the general government and school funds. The following chart summarizes how or where we're getting the funds to pay for those programs. I know this is a little bit small. This is for general government and school subtotals. On the left, you have fiscal year '24 funding source summary, and then on the right, you have the six-year total, so it includes fiscal year '24. For general government and school subtotals, this also correlates with, in the CIP notebooks, we have a funding source summary spreadsheet that has the funding sources categorized by color. Grants is always orange, green is unfunded, yellow is local or pay-as-you-go, gray is debt, and this year, we've added blue for capital reserve. So in fiscal year '24, you see there, we still have a majority of the general government and school funds that are grant-funded. We have a little slice of blue for the capital reserve, that $860,000 that I mentioned. We have no gray, no debt planned in fiscal year '24. On the right side, you see that capital reserve in blue growing over the six-year plan. This is the same summary for the transportation program. In fiscal year '24, the transportation program is 95% funded by grants. The remaining five is pay-as-you-go and CIE local funds, also no debt in fiscal year '24. In the six-year total, you see, we do have some gray for debt. We have $11.9 million planned right now, I believe. Again, hopefully, optimistically, that will, will be applying for future grants to fill and to change, to convert that gray to orange, and same with the tiny slice of green that you see there for unfunded. For the stormwater program, in fiscal year '24, it is 100% grant-funded. Unfortunately, $4 million of that 4.4 is still pending, but we're optimistic that we will get that. In the six-year total for stormwater, you see, there's a lot of green there. Again, we'll be working, staff is working with the CIP and stormwater programs to convert that green into orange. That pretty much concludes our presentation on the CIP tonight. I've included some sources here for more information online, for all the budget materials, and then also CIP resources and the link to the video and Cindy and I's contact information for questions or follow-up. And I think we'll take questions now, if you have any.
All right. Well, thank you very much. That was a very thorough and informative presentation. We much appreciate it. Let's go ahead and open it up to questions or comments. Do people have anything they'd like to share? Mr. Snyder?
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, well, Slide 29 certainly outlines the importance of the work that we do on regional transportation issues, and I see my job for the next couple of years is to convert the gray to the orange. So I now have my homework assignment and also to preserve the orange that's there. So thanks a lot for the presentation.
Caroline?
Yeah, sorry, I'm slow to unmute. I had a question on page 25. Is that inclusive of contractor headcount or is that FTE headcount only?
FTE count only.
So that includes the contractors?
The workload.
If you included contractors, does that include, increase your capacity?
I'm sorry, can you confirm the slide number?
25.
25, okay.
When we were referring to contracts, I believe Ms. Obzy was referring to our city staff who do contract management and cross-training. So this slide is referring to what we can do with our existing staff.
So, follow-up question on page 24. Thank you. For those project managers, the 6.5 project managers, is that FTE only or does that include contractors?
Those are FTEs and part-time employees.
They're all staff, not outsourcing the contractors.
So Alice Dorga, for example, is he not counted as a project manager?
No, he is. He's a part-time, so he's included in that number.
He's in the .5. So this includes, short answer is, this includes all project managers, FTE and contractors?
It does not include contractors, just FTE, just city staff. Part-time and full-time. That's right.
Did I get, did I mishear? Because I thought I heard a yes to that.
We might be confusing terms. If it's a part-time employee or a full-time employee, we're counting that as an employee and not a contractor. So there are no contractors in this number.
So then I think what I'm asking for is, if there are any contractors that are serving in project manager capacity, does it change the capacity for the workload? Does it increase capacity?
I think that's what helps us, as Ms. Obzy was speaking. Right now, it's 4.6, and to get us to the target of 3.5, using VDOT, Fairfax County, and outside consultants, right now, mostly on the stormwater front, helps reduce that project manager per project analysis and helps us make it through FY '24 and '25.
Okay.
Yeah, and if, I'm sorry, if I can jump in, Ms. Mester, real quick. To answer your question, council member, we do use, so right now, we're using VDOT as kind of the project lead on two projects, the Sherrill Bridge and the South Oak Bridge, and we're using Fairfax on the Shreve Road. I'll call it the sidewalk, that's not the correct term, you'll have to forgive me. So we are using those where we can. There are certain projects where we may not necessarily want to do that, such as streetscape or multimodal, where we have a little bit more flexibility over that design versus where VDOT would look at it more of a highway or collector road, if that makes sense. So we do need to be selective on what projects we do that on, but we do do that where possible. But that's, as Mr. Shields said, that 6.5 project managers, that is city staff, that does not include any contractors or any VDOT or Fairfax work with it.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll go to Ms. Hardy.
Okay. I've just got a couple of things. One question on the Sherrill Avenue Bridge project. I'm sure it's in here somewhere, but are we, that is not a, is it this year project, this fiscal year project, but is coming online soon?
Sherrill Avenue, correct?
Yeah, Sherrill Avenue Bridge.
So we do have funding now, appropriated and in the fiscal year '24 budget.
Okay.
But it will not go into construction until fiscal year '26.
Okay.
So that's, it's a relatively new funded project that we received from VDOT through IIJA bill funds, and it will be active, so.
I guess, okay, that's helpful. So I guess my question is, we're not going to end up in some sort of Oak Street Bridge sort of situation where the decline of the, of the bridge is, forces earlier action or forces activity that we would otherwise plan to do in FY '26?
Excuse me, this is, this is Tony Dudley. I want to make sure that there are, there are actually, unfortunately, just unlike some stormwater projects, there are actually two projects called Sherrill Ave. One is specific to the bridge itself, and one is, is one of the Task Force Six projects, which is, is more centralized towards the corner of South Virginia and Sherrill Ave. So there are two different projects. The one that, that is the Task Force Six is the one that'll be coming up here pretty soon in FY '25. The Sherrill Bridge, the Sherrill Bridge project is actually scheduled for later years, like around '28, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
And Zach, maybe you could comment on the condition of Sherrill Bridge?
That's the question.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Ms. Mester. Sherrill Bridge currently carries a 15-ton load limit. School buses are not permitted to cross it, if that's what you're getting at, Council Member Duncan. That has been posted that way for about a year, year and a half, which is how we had originally gotten the funding for Sherrill Ave. So we, we have taken measures, and it is a restricted bridge.
So we're not going to be forced into earlier action because of a critical failure of the, of the infrastructure, even though we've had that 15-ton limit?
For perspective, for perspective, prior to the demo of Oak Street Bridge, the bridge carried a 13-ton limit. So for comparison, we didn't have to close the bridge, but it did carry a 13-ton limit, and we had to restrict parking on one side of it. Sherrill carries a 15-ton limit and has no restrictions on parking right now.
Okay, okay. Well, just want to make sure we keep our eye on that one. Couple other things that caught my ear. Measuring against, quote, "available staff resources," Ms. Obzy, projects we may delay. You know, I've spoken earlier about, let's make sure that whatever it is that we approve, you know, there's a realistic chance that it's actually going to be able to happen. Could you say a little bit more about just generally how we are measuring available staff resources against the prioritization of projects? And if there are projects we are going to delay, does that have implications for the current fiscal year and money actually, you know, going out the door? In other words, it wouldn't go out the door because we wouldn't have the staff resources to make it happen? Or are there other specific examples of projects that might see delay because we just can't manage to hire enough people to get the work done?
So I'm going to let Mr. Bradley answer, too, but I just want to say that as far as prioritization in the CIP, we always prioritize projects that are fully funded and ready to deliver. So some of the projects that we've identified already for possibly being delayed may have, like we have some projected funding issues or deficits on them. So those would be, sort of why those would be lower priority for delivering. I can't remember the second half of your question, Mr. Duncan.
Fortunately, neither can I. I think you responded to the.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying. Obviously, by the end of the day, I'm going to be looking for, you know, things that we want to do that we simply, realistically, are not going to be able to do.
Right.
What is the dollar figure associated with that? And can that dollar figure be converted into pennies on the tax rate? I would prefer not to collect taxes from people beyond what's, you know, fair and reasonable. And especially, I would prefer not to collect taxes on projects that we just know that we're not going to be able to do in this current fiscal year.
Right.
Even if we have a plan for the out-years, you know, I'm focused on the current fiscal year.
I would say to that piece and sort of the risk, we're not at risk of losing money, but these are also grant dollars. So we are looking at, let's say, we have a lot of ARPA on stormwater, so we're going to work the stormwater so we don't lose the ARPA because it has an X deadline. If a VDOT, because they often delay us, we're not going to risk losing it, we can push it out a little bit. So it's a bit of, we've gotten a lot of grants, and now we're trying to pace it a little better. So it's not that we are issuing debt, because we're actually not, and it's not local money that we're sort of pacing on and slowing down a bit. It would be ARPA or grant funding.
Yeah, to the degree that we have any local match money, that would be what my focus would be on. Yeah, no, I think.
As far as the risk, we would also prioritize projects, like if we were at risk for losing funding, which we're not right now, but if we were, we would prioritize that project to deliver and not delay as well. Zach, did you want to say anything else about the delayed projects, the possibility of delaying projects?
Yeah, just to do a slightly deeper dive, as you look at the workload analysis table, generally speaking, we're around three and a half to four projects per project manager in facilities, sanitary sewer and stormwater. The biggest lift for us is transportation, where we have two full-time employees, no part-timers, for 15 projects. So that goes to what Ms. Obzy has presented earlier. About eight of those are handled in-house, three or four of those are currently with, I'll say, consultants from other jurisdictions to assist us in managing, whether it be Fairfax, County, VDOT, what have you. And then the ones that are currently on hold are primarily ones that are underfunded. They're partially funded to date, they're something we could start on engineering. We're currently seeking other sources of grant money to proceed with those and to get those done. So by the time you kind of factor all of that in, while it looks like we've got 15 projects for two project managers, by the time you factor in those projects that are on pause and the projects that are with other entities, that number does drop to around four-ish, plus or minus. So it is a little bit more reasonable than that first blush of seven and a half, which goes to what Ms. Obzy presented earlier with, with being able to implement the CIP in FY ' '24. But that's all I'd like to add.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just three, I want to say three positive things. Don't want to sound like an old crouch. You know, for years, we told the staff, we don't have the money to do whatever it is we need to do, go find some money. And obviously, we've succeeded in a huge way in that endeavor, which is great. We're getting other people's money and spending in Falls Church, and that's always a good thing. So kudos to the staff, everybody who's been involved in the quest for state and federal funds. Second, as I look at, we haven't talked much about the schools part of the CIP. I don't know if that's like part of this discussion or not, but I just wanted to observe the happy news that enrollment projections listed on page 30 and 31 for the schools for the next, oh, golly, 20 years, 15 years at least, show that the campaign that we all here in the room have been involved in to upgrade the infrastructure of our schools has been hugely successful and gives us capacity well, well, well into the future to handle any expected enrollment growth, and that's good news. any expected enrollment growth, and that's good news. And finally, the South Washington project is good news to hear, more work in that area beyond, as you said, Maple Avenue intersection to city limits, just because, you know, that stretch of Route 29 looks exactly like it looked, you know, in 1955 when you see the old pictures, which ain't so good, in my opinion. So it's good that we are focusing our attention on that part of town, which has not been neglected, but which, you know, definitely can use an upgrade. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Great, thank you. So first of all, really nice job on both the video as well as the presentation. Caitlin, I'm going to give you and probably the rest of the team credit for it, probably the most comprehensive CIP presentation I've seen in six or seven years now. So nice job. I'm going to start with a couple of high-level kind of questions and comments and then dive into some specifics. For FY 24, given that this is an even-year CIP, if I remember correctly, because it's an even-year CIP, that's the year we're allowed to add new projects? And other than, I think it was slide 16 that kind of flew by, is there a good, I guess, summary of what are the new projects we are adding to the six-year CIP? And if we don't have a slide like that, it can go in the Q and A for the next turn of that document. I think 16 might have just been a snapshot of some projects we haven't talked about, but let me know if there is a better reference document. I read through most of the other CIP documents, because these, I think, we feel like we've talked about, right? So these are not the new things we've added to the six-year CIP. Is there a good place for that?
I think we probably could summarize that in a budget Q and A because you would have to compare, they're mostly in transportation, you'd have to compare last year and this year. I would say even though FY 24 is an even year, which is where we look to add, because of the staffing discussion we've been just having, we didn't add a lot in the near term, where we see additions is in the out years like North Washington, which is FY 26, and the South Washington to the property line is also an out year. So there's new projects that way. And then like the generator, so we can do a summary list for the next Q and A.
Yeah, I think some of these are new, well, technically, they're new because they, last year in the proposed CIP, they were pending, and now we actually have the funding confirmed and, and awarded. So that's why they're added here. A lot of the new projects this year, I would say, like Ms. Mester mentioned, are in like facilities and public safety. There's not a lot in transportation, though. And that's, again, speaking to, like, we're really focused on delivering what's existing in transportation with, with the resources that we have.
Got it. Yeah, I think that would be helpful because I think because it's a rolling six years, a lot of this is old for us again, so it's just helpful to know when new stuff appears in case we forget. Second broad kind of comment is, I think the point-in-time kind of pie charts that you show later in the presentation are good, especially to see kind of shift of funding. What I'd love to see either in the next turn or future years is actually shows the CIP as a stacked bar chart over time, because for those of who've been around at least four or five years, you'll see that obviously there have been dramatic shifts from facilities to other things. And so I think that evolution of the CIP, not just, again, as a one-year snapshot or even the six-year snapshot of a pie chart, but showing that progression over time and how priorities have shifted and are we being responsive to where the community's priorities are, would be a good way to show the six-year CIP investments.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's also what I was sort of talking about with the addition of the prior year funding on the CIP sheets this year. I think that's been an improvement too, to, just overall, to see things holistically and see where, what investments we've been making in which programs and which neighborhoods and all of that, so.
And then likewise, kind of a similar part B of that is, as we think about an equity lens is, you know, there's probably different ways to break that out, right? Like, obviously, we have transportation across the city, we try to make sure that those investments are spread across the city, but this is the PM in me kind of wants to look at the data cut different ways as we get more sophisticated and have you working on this, Caitlin. Next question or thought, building on what Mr. Duncan said about kind of projects per project manager, and I guess the concern about canceling or delaying projects, I guess I have a different take. I love that we are using VDOT and Fairfax County resources when we have shared projects. Is it also possible along the same vein to think about using our one-time dollars that we are very successful at getting in terms of contractors and not FTEs? So that we can bring that 4.5 projects per PM down to 3.5? Can we add more contractors, I guess, given that these are one-time projects? Can we also use one-time funds for PMs essentially to deliver those projects?
So the contractors have to be managed as well? And it's, it's a good question, it's a kind of a natural question, but it's, it's a handful to take that on. The, and I think it gets back to Councilmember Leon's question of sort of envisioning that there are contractors embedded here with the city staff, like would be the case at the Pentagon, where, you know, half the people in the Pentagon are probably contractors as opposed to US government employees. That's not been our model to, to do things that way, and partly just because of the procurement processes to get those contractors on board. It's something we can discuss a bit more, and, you know, this obviously is a big surge. This is a very large and complex CIP. As Mr. Bradley just noted, we have 15 live transportation projects and two PMs. So we've been working through strategies on managing that, which we've described earlier tonight. You've listed a third. We can get back to you on the pros and cons of that.
Yeah, I would like to explore that strategy more because I, I mean, the alternatives are, one, we delay projects, and I don't think people are going to like that answer. Two, we add more kind of FTEs, which adds to the operating budget, which people probably also don't like either. And so while I understand that we need people to manage the contractors, I know that it's also pretty competitive to hire for those as well. I would like kind of different thinking on how do we get these projects through this, kind of this, this big hill we've got. Okay, moving on. So we talked about how this is the first year that we are deploying capital reserves, and given that it's something I've talked about at least the past two budget cycles, knowing that we are getting to this point, I think it probably needs a little more fanfare than a couple of slides. I think I heard, Caitlin, you talked that we are deploying 12 million of capital reserves over the next six years, if I got that correctly, correct?
It's 11 and a half, but yes.
On page, and I don't have the deck in front of me, but I know it's in the CIP binder, it's page 2-4, we talk about when we need to hold the 20% available fund balance to 20%. And I think that's on two metrics that we passed back in 2018 when we adopted the new financial policies. One is the debt-to-expender ratio needs to be below 12%, and the second is the payout ratio needs to be below 25 for five-year and 50% for the 10-year. If I recall correctly, when I looked at the, the slides, we're at 11% on debt-to-expender ratio, we're actually below 12% already. I don't know if Ms. Baugh was on the line to confirm that. And we're actually going to get back down to 8% debt-to-expender ratio in FY 25 or '26. I think on the payout ratio, we're getting pretty close. We're at like 23 or 24% compared to where we need to be at 25%. Where I'm going with this is, while I know we are trying to hold to 20% available fund balance, I don't actually think we need to be at 20% if we are actually going to be below both of those financial policies this year or next year. Did someone comment on that?
Yes, sure, I'll take that one. So while we are coming within the policy for the debt to, debt service to expenditure ratio within 12%, the payout is going to take another three or four years to come into compliance. There is a 25%, and then the 50% debt payout, the five-year and the 10-year thresholds for that. And in the model, we, I think it's fiscal year '26 or '27, up till that, we have to go into this, we have to follow this new available fund balance projection policy of being within the 20%.
Yeah, so I know that we're, it sounds like we're below debt-to-expander ratio, but we have a few more years before we get to the payout ratio, correct?
That's correct.
If I could just make a request to model that out, just so I think it's transparent for everybody, because we spent so much time kind of developing these financial policies, modeling out how much we need to hold an available fund balance, and it's pretty sizable because we're at 31% of general fund right now that we're holding in reserves, and rightfully so, because we had huge debt that we're paying for. But we know we're coming off the huge debt service. Sounds like one of the two metrics that we're holding ourselves to is now also in the safe zone. It would be great to model out the payout ratio as well as debt-to-expander ratio and when we can actually drop back below 20% in terms of how much we're holding to reserves. And then where I'm going with this is, again, we have a whole bunch of taxpayer money in these kind of one-time funds, a whole bunch of one-time needs. I'm hearing staff tell me that we need more resources to deliver on these one-time needs. And so I want to make sure that we are prudent with what's being held in reserves, and we're not holding too much in this capital reserves, especially because we developed policies in 2018 that we are now, you know, doing very well, and we are very prudent, and I think we are coming off of that peak. So if I could have a request that we model out both of those metrics, so we can kind of inform the, the use of the capital reserves in the coming years, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'll do that.
Thank you. My related follow-up question has to do with, I guess it was on, I think it was in the budget book, it talked about on page B 0-20, I think we talked about using 1.2 million of fund balance in FY 24. In FY 25, we're planning on using 9 million. Is that inclusive of everything that was covered in the CIP document?
Sorry, which page did you refer to, Ms. Hardy?
B 0-20 of the budget book, I can pull it up. It talks about fund balance. It's the same fund balance kind of chart on the bottom, and then it's the Excel chart above that talks about fund balances, percentage expenditures, we're kind of hovering at 30% these few years. So this year, we're planning on using 5.8 million of fund balance in FY 25, it goes up to 9 million?
So that's correct. If you see, can you go to that?
And I only highlight that because it's such a big jump, right? Because our debt service for the high school, for example, is around $3 to $4 million, and I know that we're planning to use it for the CIP, but 9 million just jumped out as a really big use of it?
Yeah, seven, so there is debt service of about 4 million in there, and then there is the 3.9, that's the use for CIP that Caitlin just went over. And so it, it is a big chunk, but those, those are the years where, by the time we have started, also, we have received, that'll be the fifth year of our payment, the ground lease payment, and also we've, we would have started receiving some tax yield as well. So if you see the ending balance, it, it's still in double digits. It does drop down a little bit in '27, '28, but then we pull it right back up, and that is because this is a six-year CIP, and future CIPs are going to have an impact on the further years, like '29 and '30 as we go on.
Got it. And the reason why that the slide shows a drawdown of 7.7 million and the chart shows drawdown of 9 million is the budget book show, is for total available fund balance and the slide is just for capital reserves?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, I am a proponent of drawing down capital reserves because my sense is that we do have a lot of money kind of stocked away here, but I do want to make sure that because we've been working so hard at adding to capital reserves, that we are just as deliberate and thoughtful at deploying it and provide as much transparency as possible on when we get below the metrics that we cared about, when it's safe to use it, and then the specific areas that we are using it against, so that it's not, we're not, you know, losing reserves with dribs and drabs, and it is very thoughtful deployments on things in the CIP that we think are worth the investments, because 9 million is a big chunk out of that. Uh, next question. So two projects I'm going to pick on, and again, I don't know if these are just new for this year or just things that happened to be on the CIP video that we all saw. The community center generator, it sounds like we are replacing the diesel generator with a natural gas one, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's, how much is that expenditure going to be?
I got this cell spreadsheet here, just a second.
I couldn't find it in the slides or the video.
The community center generator is 345,000, of which 135,000 is grant, or is local, sorry, 210 is grant, 135 is local.
Got it. Yeah, 60% grant. Got it. So I know that while natural gas is preferred over diesel, I'm not a huge fan of calling it sustainable or green because obviously it's still not renewable nor green. What are the alternatives here for us?
I'm going to ask Mr. Bradley to speak to it, and, and we had this conversation with the planning commission as well. It's, it's more environmentally friendly, but yes, natural gas is not, but we have sort of the resiliency priority as well as what's available to work with our systems, including the new age vac. So, Mr. Bradley, can you add some additional context?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Mester. So I, to, to be frank, Councilmember Hardy, I'm not sure there is another option. It's either diesel or natural gas, and the generator does have to be replaced for the community center to keep its status as a cooling or warming shelter. With the new HVAC going in, the existing generator is way underpowered for what the energy use of the, or sorry, the electric use of that new system will be. So it does need to be upgraded. The existing roof does not support solar. It's, I don't, I frankly, I don't know if there's another option.
And Mr. Bradley, it's also part of the planning so we have the option to rely less on natural gas for the heating of the building in winter time, is that correct? So, so we would have?
Yes.
The generator would be able to, need to be upsized because if it's going to be heated with electricity, the generator's going to need to be able to cover that as well?
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner Shields. So with the HVAC improvements in the community center, there is a substantially higher electric draw, primarily for the heating system during the winter. So that this generator being replaced would accommodate for that additional electric draw, so that if power is lost, we can still use the community center for that warming shelter.
And what are the normal lifespans for generators?
With how we use them and, and the capacity, upwards of 15 to 20 years, industry standards might be a little, little lower, but they're, they're using them at a much higher frequency than we are. Ours are primarily standby and emergency use only.
Got it. So given that, I think, our most recent mixed-use building, which I think was founders too, we had kind of said that we weren't going to use natural gas in any of the residential units. Again, I understand this is for emergency use for generators, and there may not be great alternatives. I'm just not a huge fan of us using fossil fuels, especially in any long-term investments. And so while we don't have other alternatives for things like HVAC replacements, which I know we were discussing for the community center and potentially at some of our schools, I would encourage us to not use natural gas and look for obviously more sustainable options, especially if things are going to last us at least five years or more for it to belong in the CIP. So that's one specific question. The other is the police.
Let me just stop in there, Lottie, when you're, while we're talking about this, about the geothermal for the HVAC, like that's still being, for the HVAC for the community center, not the generator for the HVAC, that's still being pursued, is that correct?
So we are doing?
Yes, that is still being.
Go ahead, Mr. Bradley.
Okay, yes, that is being pursued. We are working on a feasibility analysis to see, I'll, I'll say how much land we would need to put in geothermal wells over, whether it's deeper pits or multiple pits over a larger square footage. We are currently exploring that to, to see what that looks like, to see if it's feasible with the space that we have.
Thanks, thanks for letting me interrupt, Lottie, just while we're on that topic. I thought it made sense to ask that question.
Yep, thank you. And I'm glad that we're exploring geothermal for the long-term HVAC replacement. Last question, that's on a specific project, has to do with remodeling property yard B to become an evidence garage for the police? I believe that's also a new project, or at least one that we haven't talked about in the past.
That's a new.
Is that correct?
New project.
Got it. And that's 300,000, I think I saw that from the slide or from somewhere.
Correct.
Given that we had just renovated, I guess it feels like just, but it's, it's been two or three years now, City Hall, and we added the garage for the police vehicles, are we telling, you're telling us that we don't have room for large evidence storage anymore?
That is correct. The parking garage at City Hall never covered all those vehicles. So, Mr. Bradley, do you want to talk about the storage of vehicles out property yard now in the plan?
Yeah, I, I can, I can dive into that. So the garage at City Hall is, is meant for the day-to-day cruisers, admin vehicles, sheriff vehicles, that, the, the judges, prisoner transport, kind of functions like that. It was never designed to take the impounds or the, the criminal investigation on impounding cars, kind of put them in a secure location to be able to search them, so that they're locked up out of the, both the view and the reach of the public. The current impound lot is shared with the bus lot, and unfortunately, with how the schools operate, that gate is open during the day, so the buses can come and go as they need to. So right now, the police are storing. So right now, the police are storing impounded vehicles in a unsecure lot. And we actually, it's not often, but we do occasionally get some folks that are trying to get their impounded vehicle back, that wander in off of Shreve, make their way to the property yard and then look for some assistance that way. And I think the primary driver behind having the garage or kind of under roof space is whether, so that whether if it rains, it's not washing off evidence from a vehicle. If it's a convertible and the roof has been kind of sliced open, they can kind of preserve that car while they collect that evidence. So that is the intention behind that project.
Got it. And when is it scheduled for in the CIP right now?
FY25. It's 300,000, as I mentioned, and it's using capital reserves.
And how many cars or large things we have impounded at one time? On average, do we know? And if not, we can follow up?
I don't know off the top of my head. That's something that I would have to follow up with everybody on. It does vary, and I think that the critical part is having that garage space to do that investigation to find evidence, which is something that is not currently available.
Yeah, no, I hear you. The security and kind of having it covered is important. I'm just concerned that obviously we've spent a lot of money on City Hall. It was supposed to accommodate kind of all the future needs we had, and now we're hearing that we have needs that need another 300,000 next year. I guess my related question or thought is that obviously the property yard is adjacent to kind of the future Gordon Road triangle. And I'd hate for us to go spend 300,000 on closing up and creating a garage for impounded vehicles when there might be some broader long-term economic development plan there. And while I know that's essentially many years away, I want to make sure that we are thoughtful again about that and not putting money into something that could be undone within a few years.
Mr. Bradley, maybe you can comment. I know Yard B is between Shreve Road and the concrete plant, so not a likely spot for a large redevelopment, which is partly why we were thinking about that while separately, you're also looking at the property yard feasibility study.
Yes, I would concur with that, Ms. Mester. Yard B, for those who aren't familiar, is immediately adjacent to the Vulcan concrete plant. It's a rather narrow area, maybe 50 feet wide. It's sandwiched in between Vulcan and one of the residential houses on Shreve. It's a very long, very narrow lot, not terribly conducive to rebuilding by itself. And I believe Vulcan owns the house that's on Shreve. I'm not 100%, but I believe they do. So I, my best guess at this time would be that if that lot were ever to be redeveloped, it would be for Vulcan for more space. I will note, just for situational awareness, the way that we are freeing up the space for PD is in essence, we are banking on taking back the Fairfax Water Lease building. That's across from the current property yard, being able to store within that building to kind of make that space available. So it's not something that would be permanent. But with the condition of the building, it is rather expensive to meet the needs of what PD needs to do.
Maybe as kind of a broader discussion is actually the status of the Gordon Road triangle in general. So between the property yard and the homeless shelter, the housing commission has discussed kind of the future of the homeless shelter, given it's above the Fairfax Water Building, this kind of proposal for what property yard B would do, the status of the private buildings kind of nearby, like that just feels like that merits maybe a broader update. Or, like you said, situational awareness, so we know kind of where the moving parts are before we decide to invest 300,000 in something that could be shifting.
And we can schedule that as a work session in the future. We are launching a feasibility study just to tackle all these questions. And similar to the high school planning process, the first step is to do an assessment of what our DPW needs are, what our space needs are, what our functional needs are, and then how that would fit on the land with several different configurations. And then from there, you can go into a discussion about what might be, you know, land that the city doesn't need in the future that could be part of a larger redevelopment or put into other uses that we need to operate the city. But first step is let's figure out what our operation, what our needs are to do the function that we're doing right now.
Great, thank you. That's it for questions for me.
Ms. Godley?
Thank you, everyone, Ms. Hops, Ms. Mester, Ms. Baba, for that, all the information in the CIP. While I have not been here as long as Mr. Duncan or Mr. Snyder, or Mr. Charter for that matter, I do remember when the CIP was just fraught with people wondering, how are we going to come up with pay-as-you-go money? So you have really done an amazing job over the last 10 years of of finding places for all these things, finding funding for all these things. And I remember saying many years ago that we just have to take a leap of faith and hope things turn out okay. And things are turning out really okay. So thank you. We took on some huge debt and some big projects. So just a couple of questions. One, well, the Washington Street Transit Plaza, how many years was that in the CIP?
The first funding from our former congressman was 2008. I just pulled it up so I could prepare for the that was Congressman Moran's first FTA earmark.
I think that was a repurposing of a grant that came in like 2000 that Councilmember Snyder had a hand in lobbying for, I think.
Yeah, we reprogrammed-
I mean, it really went way back.
Yeah, we reprogrammed it three times through Congress.
Right. So that's just an example of things that we have pushed off and reshaped and changed as we go. So even as we look at some of the things that are towards the end that are not funded yet, I mean, when we started doing the stormwater three years ago, we didn't know how we were going to get funding for that. So I do feel like that leap of faith, that understanding that what the staff is able to do and pull in from grants and repurpose and move things around and refinance bonds and all those things are really serving the city well. So thank you. As far as the IT stuff goes, that's a refreshed citywide? There's two IT things. One of them was in the operating budget of doing an assessment of IT. Is this different? The same?
Yeah, this is a CIP, so it's a capital investment. And it's 250 per year and it's looking at the core infrastructure switches and things. Ms. Baba, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, in the IT operations is more, these are like things that are going to cost more than 150,000 and over a specific number of years that qualify for capital. And the operating budget has, there is 50,000 for a study of coming up with, looking at their and a best practice with other jurisdictions.
So are those two things tied together?
No, they're very separate things, yeah.
And as far as the EV and hybrid vehicles for DPW go, where are those EVs, where the chargers going to be?
Those chargers would be at the property yard.
In that same triangle there. Yes, okay.
So I will, I will add to that, Ms. Mester. Out of the 10 that are in the grant, it's looking right now as if four will be up at the property yard and six will be installed at City Hall. Those numbers may flip to six at the property yard and four at City Hall, but they will be split between the two locations. The intention behind that is to not help only DPW grow in EVs, but other departments such as police initiating a motor pool for multiple departments, so on and so forth. So they won't be all aggregated at one location. And even the DPW vehicles will be split between the two locations with several ultimately ending up in a motor pool as that's implemented.
Okay. And then we're paying for these vehicles with grants. I know for a while back, we were doing debt service on some vehicles. Are we doing that anymore? Are these are all being paid for upfront?
There's two things in the CIP. The 600,000 you're referring to right now is 100% grant funding through Congressman Byer last year for the community request funding program. And we do have 200,000 put into our other capital replacements. That would be broader vehicles and that's pay-go. And then within some departments, like the police, they have some money in their operating budgets. So I would say that one of the things we're doing, Mr. Bradley is working with Mr. Young, and we're trying to work on a holistic strategic plan for vehicle purchases and lifecycle costs and where we can do EV or hybrid and get a plan in place related to that and consolidate, at least conceptually, where all the money is so that we can strategize on that. Did I capture that, Mr. Bradley?
Yes, very well, Ms. Mester.
That's great. I do appreciate that because it was a time when we were scrambling trying to come up with money to get a bus here and a police car there. And this is a much more systematic way to do that. So thank you. And especially because we're trying to have electric vehicles. And I think, those are my main questions. Ms. Hart, I want to echo what Ms. Hardy said about the 12% threshold for the debt service and the payout ratio and all that. I was following that same line of questioning and just wanted to be sure where we were on that process and that arc of payments. So thank you for looking at that. Mrs. Hardy said it way better than I could. So I appreciate that you brought that up. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there anything else anyone would like to say or we'll go ahead and take a short five-minute break? Mr. Duncan?
One quick thing. I noticed driving around today, the, well, Zach is still on the line. The Hawk signal at Harris Teeter appears to have been reinstalled. I can't tell if it's working yet. The pedestrian didn't push the button, but we had chewed on your ankle about that recently and I was pleased to see that the the light itself at least is installed and is not working. Hopefully it soon will be.
All right.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to give a quick update on the RRFB there. I do, just to reinforce, since we do have Hawk signals going in, the yellow flashing lights are rapid flashing beacons and the Hawk signals are on mast arms. They're the two lights stacked on one. With the primary difference being that the Hawk signals require traffic to stop where the rapid flashing beacons are a warning device for cars to pay attention and begin to yield. But just as a quick update, we did receive the solar panel in the base to install those. We got those up. We found that the batteries were not working. So we have batteries on order. I believe we're expecting those in the next week or two. Based on tests we've run, we truly believe they're going to be up and working once they get batteries. But we will find out once we get the batteries. So please bear with us as we start to diagnose and troubleshoot that. But we do think it'll be working in the next couple of weeks once those batteries are in.
And we're still waiting for a part on, speaking of other flashing lights, on Great Falls and Lincoln. That's still a four-way stop with a flashing light. I was asked about that a couple of times this weekend. That's still waiting for a part, right?
So I need to confirm with our vendor. My understanding is that we think it may be a bad cabinet. If we have to order a cabinet, the quickest we're going to get one is somewhere between 15 and 20 weeks. We are working on options and we're working to see if we can't patch something together to get us through that time period. But all the components seem to be working. We've received new components. We believe it is the cabinet at this point.
Okay. So just if we, if it does take that 15 to 20 weeks, we'll want to send a communication out to the general public that it's going to take that long? And why?
Yes, yes. Yes, absolutely.
While we're here having fun, so is the short-term work through, you know, putting up temporary traffic signals like we did at the State Theater on Lawton? Or is it having bigger, better stop sign? I mean, we drove past that intersection Friday night and the stop sign had actually, because of the wind, fallen down in the middle of the street. So I should have called the non-emergency line. But it just underscores how, you know, I mean, it's basically an uncontrolled intersection with the stop sign on the ground. Is the idea that we would have some old-fashioned approach like that or are you talking about something fancier?
So it would be bigger and better stop signs with maybe some advanced warning signage. Renting those temporary signals for a four-leg intersection resides somewhere around the $20,000 to $30,000 a month mark. So that's not a financially feasible option at this point, given the lead times of material.
All right, Ms. Hardy, last word on this topic.
Well, we're grilling Zach on outages. Zach, you saw the note from the resident near Great Falls in Lincoln that the Pedhead has never worked in the two or three years it's been up as well?
I did, yes. I've, I'm trying to think of what her name was, but yes, I did see it. That's something we're going to address with whatever we're able to fix this signal with as well.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I'm concerned about if it is, you know, at least several months of lead time. I think we need some sort of interim measure because while I'm a big fan of four-way stops, they're actually better for pedestrians than a traffic signal. That one is not a very squared-off intersection and it's really long crosswalks on all the ways and you just don't have great visibility. People blow through that four-way stop right now as it is. And so I want to make sure that we have some other interim safety measures if it is a whole cabinet replacement that we need to do for the pedestrians and people going to the parks. Thank you, Zach.
Yes, and I agree. It will be more than what is there now. We just need to figure out what we can source and what we can get in. But yes, agreed.
All right. Well, unless there's anything else, we want to thank you once again for an excellent job, very thorough, informative presentation. Let's go ahead and take a seven or so minute break and reconvene at 9:40. Thank you. So, Wyatt, is this over to you?
And I don't have a big presentation tonight. The staff report was really last Monday night. But what is before you is the ordinances that would affect the budget as it has been recommended for first reading. And then, the council will go through its deliberation process. Of course, you have markup scheduled for May 1st, and then final consideration the following week on May 8th. One thing to note, we are reuniting the operating budget in the CIP into one ordinance. We broke them into two ordinances once, like 10 years ago, because of some more work we want to do on the CIP, and we just kept them apart for multiple years. But we're proposing just to bring them back together again in one ordinance, the way we did it probably a decade earlier. The ordinance for the taxes has the proposed real estate rate staying unchanged at $1.23 per $100 assessed value, and the car tax portion of the personal property tax going to a rate of $4.80. The, that's sort of a springback from the 70-cent reduction that the council enacted last year. The average car owner, however, would see a reduction in their bill, and this is one of the questions that was asked, and it's in your packet. I think the average reduction would be, and I don't recall what the answer was.
(inaudible).
Putting them all together, but the car tax in of itself is an average decrease of...
Of $98.
$98, about $100. And then, lastly, just to note, what's before you is a 3% increase in the sanitary sewer rates, as well as a change to the connection fees that developers pay when they hook up to the city system. As we've noted, we are purchasing additional capacity from Fairfax County, and so that is our main cost that developers are needing to help compensate the city for, is to buy that additional capacity. And since we're buying that capacity from Fairfax County, we're recommending that we set our connection fees at the county rate. So, that would be an increase for a single-family home from $7,680 up to a proposed rate of $8,860. And then, the other change is apartments would go from $6,040 per apartment to $7,088 per apartment and so forth. Those do generate really significant dollar amounts that we use then for the sanitary sewer capital program. On the stormwater side, we're asking for a 4% increase to the impervious billing rate. It's based on impervious coverage on private property, and that is just to deal with cost inflation due to contracts as well as the staff salaries. So, that's a summary. Karen, were there any other key points to add? This is really your time to discuss it, and I probably spoke longer than I intended to already.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Shields. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, thank you for providing answer to the question, what are other jurisdictions doing in terms of the tax rate? So, as I see the chart that's provided, jurisdictions, large and small, several are shaving their tax rate a bit, from a good bit to a bit, including the Annaleseburg, Manassas, Manassas Park, for the smaller jurisdictions, and Prince William, and Loudon for the larger jurisdictions. I'm not going to say a whole lot more about this topic right now, because we still have many miles to go to figure out what the bottom line on what we have and what we want to spend and what we really need. But I just wanted to call everyone's attention to the fact. And wonder if anybody has any comments on that, Mr. Manager? Your impressions of how this compares to previous years and what jurisdictions and Falls Church have done in recent years relative to what it appears is going on this year? Not to make you negotiate against yourself, I'm just, you know, I mean, compared to past years, how do you feel area jurisdictions are looking at the tax load?
Is he giving you the eye? I looked, Phil, I think Wyatt's giving you the evil eye.
I have a, I have a response to that.
After these years, after all these years, I'm way used to the eye.
Can I make a comment? I have a, I looked at that chart differently than you did, Phil. I looked at that and said, look at this. Falls Church is the lowest among the small jurisdictions.
Good news, I mean.
I think it's really good news, because there was a time when we were not the lowest among the small jurisdictions.
I'm not saying, I'm not. This is not a loaded question. I'm genuinely curious to know where we feel like we are relative to other jurisdictions. And, you know, I mean, what's amazing is that some of the jurisdictions shave, like, yeah, a hundredth of a cent off their tax rate. Can we at least do that? Can we find a hundredth of a cent?
(inaudible).
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I don't know. It's, yeah. I know, really. I mean, how small can I get? Anyway, I'm just...
All right.
My colleagues are welcome to observe later if they want, but that's, thanks for the information. Oh, one other, on a different topic. It was mentioned during CIP that certain expenses are being carried, paid for by, you know, connection fees and developer paid for. Is there a place we can go to quantify, you know, the amount of money that is coming online, particularly at West Falls, but with the other developments too, and how that connects with expenses that you're incurring in the budget, particularly new expenses? You know, we're hiring a new right-of-way inspector. Just want to make sure people understand that we wouldn't be hiring that new right-of-way inspector probably if we didn't have new development, and the new development is paying for that right-of-way inspector, I believe. Same with, you know, safety inspectors and to some degree. I would just like a soundbite. This is sort of like something Mary Beth would ask for, you know, to make sure people understand that there's, you know, there's costs associated with what we're doing. I get that. But there's also revenue streams that never existed before that are helping meet those costs.
We could suddenly tally that up.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Vice Mayor Hardy?
All right. Just an observation in response to Phil's question about the tax rate and the regional comparisons. If we bring up the chart, and I don't know whether it's possible to bring it up, but my observation from it was actually the people or the jurisdictions that are doing or proposing tax rate decreases are also seeing double-digit AV growths. So, it's really just offsetting, you know, the 10%, 15% commercial and residential increases in assessed values. And given that ours is pretty much in the middle at 5.5%, there's less kind of, less of that in other jurisdictions that look like ours. Wyatt, is that a correct kind of, I guess, interpretation of that data in that chart?
I think so, yes.
As much as we all would like to see the tax rate further decrease, I just think it's much harder to do when you're looking at more modest growth as we are. And I think 5.5% actually, in comparison to the past 10 years or so, is actually very, very healthy, just not the 10-plus percent that we saw last year.
All right. Other comments, questions?
I have...
Mr. Snyder?
Go ahead, Mr. Snyder. Just a couple of specific ones related to some of the line items in the budget. And one is, on page B05, there's a big decrease in public assistance, and I'm just wondering if that's pandemic-related, that we had put more in to help people and we don't need as much. But I keep seeing national stories about Medicaid, supplemental Medicaid ending and SNAP assistance ending, and I'm just wondering how we think that's going to affect Falls Church. And so, I was surprised to see a decrease in that kind of funding.
And I believe that is related to the federal aid that we were passing through, through the CARES Act and then through ARPA.
So, what, I guess what I'm wondering...
It wasn't local dollars. It was...
Right. So, I'm wondering, from Dana's perspective, Ms. Jones's perspective in the HHS department, are we going to see an uptick in people who have lost some of these benefits that they've been getting directly from the federal government?
Yes.
And are we accounting for that in the budget?
So, we have added $20,000 for emergency assistance, and that was Ms. Jones's top priority request, and that is to deal with the increase that is, of these types of requests for rent, utility assistance, and food assistance that has not stopped. And so, those are still very high levels relative to the city historically.
Also, if I may add, it's added to the Affordable Housing Unit Fund. So, this is general fund, so that's why it's showing negative. So, we moved the money together all in one place.
Right. Thank you. I just deleted all my other questions. I had a whole page of them.
Mr. Snyder?
So, the super-sensitive issue after Nashville, do we, I see that we have two full-time, we're funding two full-time SROs, yet we have four, what, five school buildings. Are we really adequately providing for the safety of our students?
So, that's a very serious question. Let me engage the superintendent and the chief of police, and we can give you a responsible answer. We think about this and we plan for this very seriously, but let me give you a good response with those two.
Yeah. I, one of the changes in the world in addition to climate change is the change in gun-related violence, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can based upon the very best criteria to ensure the safety of all of our citizens. So, for me, that's why we have government in the first place, so. Next question is, have we figured in the jurisdictional contracts and the possibility that... And the possibility that some of our jurisdictional partners may be doing the same thing with their employees in terms of compensation, with or without collective bargaining, that we are looking at compensation of employees? So have we figured in a reasonable escalation of our contracts with Fairfax County and Arlington?
We have. Ms. Bow, I don't know if you want to go into more detail, but it is a big, big part of our ask of funding this year is to fund our fire judicial contracts with Arlington County, jail contract with Arlington County, and then our social services contracts with Fairfax County. Both have seen significant increases.
Do we have reasonably good numbers on those at this point as to what they're going to be, at least next year?
Correct. For 24, we get good estimates from them, and then we base our budget based on what we get from them.
So for many of them, there's some variance, but most of them, we're actually paying for 23. And it's always, there's a year lag, and so it is, we do get the benefit of certainty with those. But it's also usually non-negotiable when we're presented with the number.
Yeah. One final question, this is a question for Cindy, a treasurer. So the state doesn't have a budget yet. Are there potential downsides that we should be keeping a space open for in this budget or as we sit here tonight and then as we go forward? I know there's some potential upsides that we want to see occur and haven't yet, but how about downsides?
There's a couple of clarifications. One, there is a budget. It's just the original biennial budget. It's not the revised amendment. So there is state funding that will continue on July 1 if they don't take action. So we wouldn't lose any of the already appropriated state level that we've accommodated within our proposed budget and the schools did. The skinny budget that they did adopt did address the shortfall of the Department of Education's formula calculation error. So for FY23, our school system will be made whole because they did do a skinny budget. They did their VRS on the rainy day, and that was all they did before they adjourned. I think where we are impacted, as you noted, is the positive things that would come out of the state budget because of the increased revenue, we won't see. So there has been increased money for behavioral and mental health to address gun violence and still the mental health issues, some of the social justice issues. We won't see increase in police money. There was sheriff and treasurer compensation. And we won't see the money that Senator Sasso put in specifically for the city of Falls Church, which was $9 million.
$9 million.
So that's still pending. The other thing that's in the proposed budget that's pending was some positive things on K-12 funding, which would eliminate the support cap and some of the limits the state put on us. That meant the state money was less, so the locality was picking up more. And that's hard to quantify, but statewide, it would have been a significant impact. I know there would be some value to the city. So there's a lot of downsides of what we don't get, but there's not a negative risk because there is an underlying budget.
So we've sort of planned in the budget that you all presented that we weren't going to get those monies. We didn't plan on getting them. And that as the budget that's in place now, if that remains in place, it doesn't create a hole in our budget. Is that what I'm hearing?
For the operating pieces.
Okay.
And we did anticipate getting some stormwater money for the CIP. And we'll see by May 8 if we know or not. But it won't be spent if we don't get it. So it doesn't further the project, but it doesn't create a hole.
Is there a possibility that the budget might not only not have the things like this, the $9 million, but could actually harm revenue like from the grocery tax?
No, there's nothing in the current budget or even the proposed budget that would have eliminated the 1% grocery tax for local government.
Okay. So at this point, there have been some years where we've.
Yeah.
Major placeholder. But what I'm hearing is, as we sit here tonight, we don't need to do that this time.
Yeah.
And the hope might be that there.
Grocery tax for sure.
Right. That it could go much better, but it probably won't go worse than where we are.
That's the observations and status right now.
Great. A lot of work goes into that, too, I know. Thanks.
Ms. Leon?
Thank you, Mayor. My questions, as I look at line 96 on the inclusion and affordable housing, we've got increasing in food, I mean, food security, housing and security. So I'm trying to look at line 104 and if there's a way for HHS to publish that data, right? When we talk about increased number of evictions, is there data that can be shared for that to understand if 20K, like the impact of the 20K in terms of how many people it helps?
Sure. We can address that as part of the next Q and A.
Okay.
But just specifically, you're talking about the $20,000 for emergency rent and food assistance?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, we can get the data on the requests for that.
Yep. Because you cited there, there's an increased number of evictions. And then back up to line 28, how have we historically, what's the five-year trend for how we funded AHF? Is 120 an increase from what, from last year compared to the last three years? Can I, can I get a better sense for how we're?
So we've funded $100,000 per year for the Affordable Housing Fund for the past three years, and we're increasing it to 20,000. And that is that additional 20,000 is being proposed to be used to buy down the rents to allow certain of our ADUs, two additional ones, to be accessible for people making 30% to 40% of AMI. So we currently have a program, we're doing that with two ADUs. We'd expand that to four.
All right. So I see the four households. When we take a look at, sorry, looking at the reference to IT core infrastructure, Mrs. Conley was asking earlier around that. And I'm looking at the timing of 1.2 over six years. Why is that hardware-software investment spanning so long when IT, I mean, it moves so quickly that in six years, you're going to have outdated stuff? So what's the thinking there for me? Why six years versus three years to kind of better remediate and stabilize, right? Especially if it's security-related. Why are we not doing that sooner? Why don't we rein that in?
For the CIP IT funding, those are the bigger, heavier core infrastructure items versus desktops or tablets, and they generally have the seven to eight-year lifecycle.
What are you buying? Switches?
Yeah, switches. I can bring up the document here. It'll be switches, core infrastructures, the virtual servers.
So more, okay. Reducing hardware and more cloud.
And some of the specific is the edge firewalls, access switches, the storage capacities, both here and at our secondary secure location.
Uh huh.
And then in our operating budget is where the more shorter lifecycle tablets, computers, cell phones, et cetera reside.
Is any of that 1.2 infrastructure going to any wireless access points across the city to give public buildings that don't have great internet access more internet access?
This infrastructure serves all of the city public facilities, but it is not creating access for citizens out in the public. It is designed for city-owned public facilities.
So no wireless access points? It's, the 1.2 is just switches, firewalls, and moving to the cloud over six years?
Yep. And this is also catching up with some lack of reinvestment in the past. The CIP notebook, page 4-1, provides a little bit more of that detail for you that I'm referring to right now. We have looked at some of the citywide Wi-Fi options, you know, outside of the library or City Hall. And it's quite expensive to do that community-wide. And we do have quite a bit of access through Verizon and Cox where they have existing free hotspots throughout the city. We've done some marketing on that. It's been a while.
Okay. Moving on to growing safely, the headcount, right, to support, you know, we've got, we have folks that issue permits. I'm seeing that we're actually looking at enforcement, right, to support safety. All for that is, we've taken a look at the ratio of FTE to the number of, to the forecast, right, for planned construction. And we've, staff is fine with a construction inspector of one, an additional fire time, you know, fire inspector position of .75. Like, is that, in my mind, I'm just questioning as to whether that's low.
Well, thank you for the question. The council did, with staff, have a big lift last year where we used permit fees to increase our permit and inspection process with six additional FTEs. Those positions are all filled right now, and that is, that shop is busy as it has ever been in the city's history, processing all the construction activity in the city. We do, are not asking for additional staff in those functions right now. One thing that was discussed, and it's an unmet need, it's, we decided to take an additional year to think about this, but there are so many planning initiatives going forward, whether they're zoning text amendments or needing to update other chapters of the comprehensive plan. This question was asked of Mr. Stoddard last week, and he answered, I think, very diplomatically. But he was, you know, he was asking the budget team for additional staff to help with that, those elements of the council work plan. Those are not in the budget. So what we will be doing is kind of communicating with council, here's what we can accomplish in terms of zoning text amendments and comp plan chapters, and hopefully we can get buy-in and proceed with the staff that we have for those.
Wyatt, do we staff our folks with skill sets so they do combo code inspections, both commercial and residential? Or do you split them up? There's, you know, one that has the certifications for commercial and one that has the certifications for residential?
They do both. We have specialists who will focus in on their mid-rise multifamily projects, and we have people who will have most of their workload out in single-family projects, but they are cross-trained and there is a, sort of, most of the employees can do both.
And they're certified to do both?
Yes.
Because it's a different certification for combo code?
That's right.
All right. So how, just curious, what's the current headcount for inspectors right now?
That's in the budget book. I'm not on that page right now.
I'll take a look then. I'll do a find.
Okay. And we'll note that as a question, and we'll just make sure it's in the next Q and A.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hardy, did you have additional comments?
I did. Earlier, it was just a comment in response to Phil's question about the tax rate. A broad question on revenue and a projection. So in the budget book, I think it's GF-1. Karen, I know that when we were doing guidance in December, we were talking about kind of how sales tax was looking potentially a little risky. I wanted to follow up on those assumptions on kind of what we ended up with. Are we assuming that, is it, looks like it's flat from what was adopted in FY23? So similar to Dave Snyder's comments about what risks do we have on the state side, I wanted to understand what risks we have on our local revenues as well.
Yeah, I'm just pulling out the revenue projections to be more specific. So the sales tax, we also got one more month, and it is kind of following the same pattern that we saw in the second quarter. Not a whole lot has changed for us to change any of the projections that we have so far. And we are.
Do we think these are conservative, given that we're assuming flat sales tax? Or is there some risk there that we should be careful of?
So for that, we've kept it flat and not put in a growth factor in it. And we'll obviously continue to monitor what our online sales are looking like. That's where we're seeing the big drop. And it's hard to quantify in any way what that factor is going to be. But of course, it is, it is at a point where it is, it needs to be strictly monitored.
And obviously, we all have.
We will bring you a third quarter in May. And, but at this point, we have adjusted for the flat sales tax that we're seeing already in, since, even since December, we factored that in already in our projections.
Got it. I know that, for example, meals tax was looking very healthy at the most recent quarterly updates we got, and we still feel good about 19% growth.
Correct.
And then what about gross receipts/B poll? That's at 14%. Are we feeling okay about that? That seems pretty aggressive in light of kind of the broader concerns of inflation and recession.
Yeah, it is aggressive. We got a little update from Tom earlier today, and we have received about 80% of the receipts so far. It is showing 2% to 3% is from what I heard, increase over previous year, but it's still not a full number. It's 80% of the receipts. So that's another one that, it is driven a lot by contract activity, like the construction and all the other contracts. So that is one of the reasons why it's been projected a little aggressively. And of course, we'll see how it plays out.
And you said that we're not going to get the next quarterly update until after we adopt the budget there, right?
That's correct.
Tax relief, I think we got in a public comment about senior tax relief in the next budget work session. Could we get an update on where we are with utilization on both the deferral program and abatements?
Sure, we'll do that.
Great. I presume that we are in line with what our expectations were because there's not a request from the treasurer to add to it?
Can I do a follow-on on that one? I have a question on that one specifically about the, because there's a large chunk in there of tax relief for disabled veterans that is put in there by constitutional amendment. But we're up to $300,000 annually that, of disabled veterans who move into the city who are not paying property tax. And there's no state reimbursement for that. I'm just wondering, from a legislative angle, is that something we need to start working on in the state? And I'm sure other jurisdictions have a lot larger impact than we do.
It is a constant discussion among our peers when we're doing the legislative. No progress with the state to offset it. Of course, honoring those who have served us is good, it's the offset. And to date, General Assembly and the governor's administration have not offset their tax relief. Assembly and the governor's administration have not offset their tax relief.
You have more, Mary Beth?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for letting me interrupt. No, I don't think we should remove it. I'm just wishing that we would get the offset and that there's a way to hurry that along.
Yeah, VML and VACO have also looked at it, and it's, it's challenging how to word it so it doesn't come off like we're opposing the concept. We're just opposing that they're not making the locality whole.
Wyatt, the earlier question about unfunded needs and, in particular, Paul calling out kind of zoning updates that need to be done and not being able to do it because it's one of his unfunded needs, I didn't see it in the budget book for pages B016, B017. So that's just one quick follow-up. But in general, what I was thinking of as I was reflecting on kind of these two pages of unfunded needs and then the council work plan is, how can we draw connections between the two, right? Because we operate off the council work plan. Those are the priorities we set for kind of a rolling two years. Is there a way to kind of say, based on the budget that's proposed, here are the things in the council work plan that's not going to get done? And be able to connect the two so that it's easier for council to make decisions and trade-offs, or like, gosh, that's really important to us. I'm not okay with that not getting done. I want to put more money against it. Is it possible to kind of draw conclusions from this and true it back to the council work plan?
We generally phrase it positively. We say, here are all the great things we are going to get done. We have not itemized the things that we think, you know, we're now a year into the council work plan. What are some things that are going to be difficult for us to get done? We can give you that updated report, yes.
Yes, it goes without saying that we are getting
In the budget context.
Yeah, no, it goes without saying that clearly, especially following the CIP discussion, we are getting a whole lot done, but as we think about, I think you have put $80,000 in contingency for us to figure out what needs we're going to hear from the community. I think, be able to go back to the council work plan. They say these five things are at risk because they're unfunded needs based on the proposed budget. That would help, help us zero in on those areas rather than dig through 300 pages and, you know, have all of us come up with our own lists. Thank you. Affordable housing, so that was asked earlier, and I wanted to highlight this because it was in one of my questions that I sent last week to Karen over email. So I am very much supportive of continuing to fund the Affordable Housing Fund at now an increase of $120,000 this year. And in particular, the program that HHS is proposing is really good because we frankly don't have 30% to 40% AMI units kind of in our affordable dwelling unit program. And so what's happening now is we're taking 60% ADU units and buying down the rent, buying them down to 40%. And I think what's, housing is proposing is doing two additional units at 30%, so dipping lower in the AMI, which I think we hear is a definite need in the city. What I am concerned about, though, is that we are doing it by taking away existing affordable housing stock. So we are taking 60% units and converting them down, and we still hear there's a really strong need for 60% units. And so one of the questions I proposed in the email Q and A is, how much would it cost us incrementally to actually take market rate units and buy them down so that we're actually not taking away from affordable housing stock and actually taking away from market rate stock? And I understand operationally, it's probably a little more complicated to execute, but I do think it's important for us to be adding to affordable housing stock and not just converting 60% units down to, say, 30% or 40% AMI. And so I think the answer to that would be really important because if the cost, I mean, I think in general, buying down rent from older buildings is a really efficient way for us to kind of add to our affordable housing stock. If there's a way to do it from market rate units instead of 60% units that already have demand, I would be very much in support.
We can try to run some numbers for you on that and provide a little bit more context for that program.
Great, thank you. I think it's great. In general, I wish we could do more of it beyond the four, five units that it's being proposed. Similar to kind of what we did at Broad in Washington, as you think it's, again, just a more efficient way to do it. Could we bring up the page that I think shows the total number of FTEs being added across general government? I believe it's maybe the chart that was added in the Q and A. I thought it was in Q and A.
Oh, it's the chart.
I think it kind of lists the total number of positions we've added. And it's more of a part B question, I think, on that Dave Charter asked last week. So in particular, I think besides the $40,000 to add, $40,000 to add two hours of library time, it looks like the library is also requesting 1.25 addition in FTEs, and I would love more information on that request.
So these are some of the changes that are included in here are done as part through the year, and that's already factored in the budget. This is not specifically, that is being asked as part of the 24-year, fiscal year 24 budget?
But it says that we're adding 14.25 FTEs in this budget compared to the last year's budget.
Yeah, we can, so a question for the council is, would you like to have kind of a deeper dive on the library hours discussion at your next work session? We can, we can provide in writing a breakdown of what that 1.25 is. It's a combination of turning a part-time person into, you know, a full-time position and I think one more part-time person. In other words, they're massaging some positions to, and it comes to that number. But we could, we could get into more detail. The library board did spend many meetings and many hours on this discussion, and we could try to synthesize that a bit more for the city council.
That would be helpful. I just have less visibility into it. I think everything else that's proposed out of the 14 FTEs are things that seem aligned with priorities that we've talked about. The library one in particular just seemed to jump out because two hours at $40,000 plus 1.25 FTEs seemed pretty high to me. That's it for me. Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-on library question? Somewhere in this ocean of documents, I think there was a count of bodies through the door at the library in the most recent year, which was a number that was half of what it was the year before, and I just wondered, is that accurate number or, sort of like the question I asked Peter about the free and reduced lunch, and he, I heard him say, we're looking at those numbers again to make sure that they, they add up and they're not related to COVID or whatever. I just wondered if there are some reason. It looked to me like most of the other library numbers were, you know, a number of books checked out and so forth were pretty similar, but maybe a little lower, but dramatically lower people in the building, which
Yeah, I'll see if we can get some more context for those numbers. It could be, you know, a lot of people poking in just to see the new building, and then that's dropped off, and now the number is higher than it used to be in terms of the baseline, but, but now is moderated. I just don't know the context.
I know. Or do I?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? Okay, let's wrap up that.
Sorry, where did we end up on median and mean and average and all that? The discussion that we had in our last meeting, are we, are we developing a explanation of our salary aspirations for schools in city? Or it seems like a big question, but
So what I would propose is that we have a discussion on compensation for the work session on the 11th. We are getting, you know, a couple of charts. We're having some conversations with the school staff just so we understand their methodology because there's been a lot of questions about their methodology versus our methodology. We'll hopefully, we'll have a bit more context for that as well, and we'll do that on the 11th.
All right. I beg your pardon, Tim. Thank you. Okay, anything else on this topic? Any schedule comments or other general comments, Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Mayor, yes. One, last week at our last public session, we approved an ordinance to continue outdoor dining. Yet, what I see is outdoor dining actually disappearing from, for example, Pangier and Adacious Ale Works, and there may be other places. And when I asked folks, they said that they thought it was the result of city action. So I'm very disturbed by the outcome, regardless of whether it's city action or property owner action. And I wondered if I could ask the city manager to check with our EDO and to gather some information because I think we all took action to prevent exactly that from happening, and yet it is. So I don't, I don't understand what occurred, but if we're business-friendly, how can we allow that to happen?
So just on those two instances, I will say, I did get that, I got a question by email, and I did ask, and there is, the response is that it was not a city action that caused those two restaurants not to have outdoor dining. So I think there are other issues at play, and I won't speculate in public session what those might be, but I don't
I'd sure like to find out because we clearly established the policy in support of outdoor dining, and to have major elements of our outdoor dining disappearing, that's a very odd result. So I'm very interested in finding out what actually happened. Thanks.
Other general comments anyone has?
So scheduled, you're meeting on the 10th, but not meeting on the 7th? Sorry, I'm the mayor scheduling meeting, so not meeting on the 17th.
That's right.
Ms. Leon? Did you have another comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't take my hand down from last time.
Okay. Anything else anyone wants to say before we adjourn for the evening?
Going, going, gone. All right, everyone, let's have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.